I have five o'clock on the watch. It's time for the March 27, 2025, regular session board meeting for the Lawrence County School System School Board. Have a house full of guests. We appreciate everyone being with us and it's always great to see so much community support. Several things have taken place since our last board meeting. We've just come back and concluded a much anticipated and well-deserved spring break. So, welcome back to all of our teachers and staff. Appreciate all that they do for us each and every day. Also want to give a shout out to a couple of few athletic teams. Summertown High School Girls Team made it all the way to the Elite Eight in Murfreesboro. Loretta High School Girls made it to the Final Four. And then a shout out to the Loretta High School Boys Team for being the state champions this year in Murfreesboro. So, give those athletic clubs around the clock. Very proud and competition is alive and well and we appreciate all the hard work of all of our employees, but especially these boys and girls and their coaches. So, also here a few months ago, we started, you know, in Lawrence County School System, we're always important and always striving to push our students to achieve many things on the athletic fields, many things in the classroom, and we celebrate all those things. But we as a board also are interested in not only achieving and accomplishing those things, but also we want to promote and encourage young men and women of good character. So, we started a few months ago acknowledging a local student to talk about a character trait that is special to them. And this month, we have the privilege of being Mr. Avery Weathers, being with us, a sophomore from Loretta High School, who's going to come and talk to us for a moment about a character trait that means something to him. Mr. Avery Weathers.
Hi. As John said, I am Avery Weathers and I'm from Loretta High School. And today I'm going to talk to you about servant hood. Ben Goop sent me, so. So, I was thinking of some of the most essential traits that a leader can have, and one of the things that came to mind was servant hood. And that might seem a little bit apathical or self-contradictory because how could a leader serve? But Jesus did this exact thing by washing the disciples' feet. Because throughout in the era that Jesus lived in, the roads were dirt. They were unpaved. So, as a person walked on them, their feet became dirty. So, by that, if you throw them between, the people set wash stations by their threshold so that people could wash their feet. And the more prosperous people in society actually hired servants to wash people's feet. So, at the Last Supper, Jesus humbled himself and he washed each of his disciples' feet. John 13, 14, and 15 says, "Now that I, your Lord and Teacher, have washed your feet, you should also wash one another's feet. I have set you an example of service that you should do as I have done for you." Solomon also states in Proverbs 3, 5 through 6, "To trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your own understanding; and all your ways submit to him, and he will make your path straight." As people who lead the county and thousands of kids every single day, we have to learn to be good leaders and these people of mine, pray with me. God please just bless this county with great leadership as you already have, but let this county continue to flourish and let them remain in your will and be enlightened by you and stay in faith. You remember? Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Weathers. Now, I would ask everyone to please stand for the saying of our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Jessica, please call roll.
Adams.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Daniel.
Here.
Dryden.
Jacobs.
Here.
Rochelle.
Here.
Shannon.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Weathers.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
We do have a call. We will continue on with the agenda. First items on the agendas are recognitions. The first recognition up will be Board Member Janet Alexander with the retired educator recognition.
Mr. Tucker.
I'm here tonight to give recognition to a much, much deserving educator and friend. This is Tanya Mansfield. Tanya graduated from Lincoln Academy in Lawrenceville, Mississippi in 1980, and she graduated from Delta State University in Cleveland, Mississippi in 1983. Greg Sheridan, then her husband, that when they were in college, he was living the college life, having a grand time. But Tanya, on the other hand, was so excited to get to be a teacher that she was taking summer classes. She graduated in three years. That's Tanya's song. I first met Tanya when she brought her boys down from Lawrenceville Public and then her boys to Lawrenceville. I actually had the privilege of kitchen hunting for his first year of school. Her family was everything to her. She was proud of all her boys and she and Greg were very active in every part of their boys' lives. Becoming a Gigi to raising brands was the icing on the cake. Teaching was her passion. It was the center of almost everything she did. And her drive to give to her students the very best kept her passion alive. She was an excellent teacher, but she was also a supportive, wonderful mentor and coworker. Reached out to Betsy Berry, who had taught her grade with Tanya for seven years, to share her thoughts. She said, "I had the privilege of teaching the third grade with Tanya for many years and working with her each day truly was a privilege." There are many times I find myself telling Tanya stories to my coworkers because they always bring a smile as well as a much-dead laugh. She had an amazing sense of humor and she always found a way to lighten the mood. She was an incredible teacher. Every day she walked into the classroom, she lit it up with her warmth and her humor and her students over her because she cares deeply about each and every one of them. She knew how to make money come alive, how to make her students feel seen and heard, and how to make even the most challenging days seem lighter. It's not often that you meet someone who ever less likely can combine humor, kindness, and wisdom, but Tanya did it very well. And that's what made her unforgettable. She was the kind of person who made you feel like you could face anything, whether she was in the classroom, talking with you as a coworker, or just sharing the moment with a friend. She had a way of making everything okay. Yes, Tanya loved all of her students and they knew it. She was a firm believer that in order to reach a student, you have to treat them with the same respect that you expect from them. And of course, she added a little touch of love and firm expectations because she couldn't be the slacker from Miss Tanya. Her classroom door was always closed. That's even before we hadn't closed them. Their classroom door was always closed, but I could walk down the hall and look at that door, and I was very confident that behind that door, whatever teaching and learning was taking place was spot on. On one occasion, I had scheduled an announced observation with Tanya. She wrote a lesson plan we went over, went for the observation. Wonderful class, wonderful lesson. She planned observations by the scale. Sat there in wonderful math class, student engagement, immediate evaluation from the students, and the class was just, they were so engaged. She just kept right out. She moved to a different activity, took them into something where they did a big collaborative effort, and I was sitting there taking notes. And finally, she turned around and looked at me and she said, "Do you have enough?" It was then that I realized that my slip of 45 minutes had turned into 90 minutes because I found myself totally engaged in the lesson that was taking place. As for parents, they felt blessed to have their children with Miss Tanya for that demanding third grade year. Melinda Huntley shared, it's my client, he better leave me. When asked to share a small story or thought about Miss Tanya Mansfield, I don't know that there are words strong enough or even adequate enough to describe Miss Tanya Mansfield. And truly, despite the love and compassion that she had for her John, her students, her family, and her community. The story that comes to mind is one of my own children and their third grade experiences at Lawrenceville Public. I myself struggled as a third grade student and it was one of the hardest school years that I ever experienced. And when my oldest was about to go to third grade, I fervently prayed, asking that this experience be a good one and that we would talk about it forever, ever in a good way, whether remembering the bad things. And I have to say, the experience was absolutely a game changer in my child's life from that first phone call we received from Miss Tanya telling us that Abby Carson was going to be in the classroom. She was such an influence, unheard, that what was used to be an extra veteran of the house immediately became Miss Mansfield Junior's classroom. She came home every day, ready to replay everything that happened that day, and we stocked the room with a desk, a stool, a board, a grade book, all the teacher supplies, and even made her a magnet tag that said, "Abby Carson." So, these things were important to her, to live the life that she saw so perfect in the teacher that she loved so much. That third grade year was one that will always cost a risk and makes such a difference in my child's life to know that it was okay to be herself and to continue to focus on things that she loved. While doing this play in the afternoons, Abby Carson always went over her course of her schoolwork and her grades continued to improve, and she even wrote her little brother Carter into being her one and only student. If you ask Abby Carson today, she will tell you that she loved Tanya Mansfield. Carter was also blessed to have Miss Mansfield. His boy, not much of work, but this year, as a graduate of Lawrence County High School, in his senior spot, he recognized Miss Tanya Mansfield as having a great influence on his Our stories could go on and on, and there are people here that connect that to them, just like the legacy that Tanya left behind. She left a tremendous group of colleagues that still share her voice. Whenever there's an opportunity, and she gave us numerous students who have perfected her belief and dedication in them, truly was not wasted. And she also left a huge community gift for us that we'll forever miss her. So, it is truly an honor to make her a top of the field. There's a difference like in Lawrence County schools.
Next item, I guess I will say to the audience and to the board, you know, last month, we had some weather, I think, and whatnot, so we had to skip. We had a meeting without doing our student recognition, so we're doubling up this month. So, next item will be the Lawrence County High School. I will recognize Principal Willie Joyner. And also, Mr. Joyner, if you don't mind, after you, after the recognition, if he had sent the board, we all should have received the school report. So, if any of the board members have any questions, if you will, just after your recognition, give us a minute, see if anybody's got any questions about your presentation to the board.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, Mr. Joyner.
Thank you. Well, it is my pleasure tonight to recognize one of our most outstanding students at Lawrence County High School. I'm going to ask Denton Shelton, if you would come on up. Denton is an outstanding young man. He's a hard worker, both at home and at school. He does a great job. He has really excelled in masonry. He spent a couple of years with Mr. Cheatwood, but really, it was his junior year when he really started to thrive. He participated in the fast trial competition at Lebanon and did so with about five weeks of practice before that competition. Did really well, then went on to compete at Chattanooga later that year in the Skills USA, won the state, and then qualified to go on to the Nationals, which was held in Atlanta, Georgia last summer. There, he finished third out of 38 states that were in that competition. So, it was, we are now in his senior year. He has also won that trial competition again at Lebanon, which qualified him to go to the World Championships in Las Vegas, where he competed with students from all over the world. He's practicing now for that skills competition, which comes up next month. He's hoping to win again and go back and compete again for a national championship. His masonry instructor, Mr. Steve Cheatwood, he's with us here tonight. And I asked Mr. Cheatwood to just tell me a little bit about his thoughts on Denton, and this is what he told me. He said, "In my 45 years in masonry, I've taught two natural masons and Denton is twice as good as the other one." And that is really high praise and just an indication of how talented Denton is. He truly is an exceptional young man. I know he's going to be successful in life due to his exceptional work ethic and his dedication to his craft, and that's a credit to his parents, did it here tonight. It's a credit to all of his teachers, but especially to Mr. Cheatwood. So, again, it gives me great pleasure to recognize one of our most outstanding students, Mr. Denton Shelton.
If you want to stick around, we'll give you a shot at it. Hey, congratulations. Great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, Mr. Joyner, appreciate that and appreciate the report. I don't know if there are any questions, but I'll open up the floor if anybody's got anything to ask from Lawrence County High School.
I'd like you to just go over needs that you have, maybe refresh us on needs at Lawrence County.
Oh, and I hope you got a chance to watch my video, not for the quality of my video, just to hopefully have some of that information before you. And as far as just highlighting some of the needs, I mean, some of those are going to be addressed tonight. I noticed on the agenda that it's on the agenda tonight to look at some partitions in some of our classrooms at Lawrence County High School, and we're appreciative of that. But just moving forward, we would like to see our tutoring services that we've been able to offer to our students after school has been a tremendous asset. We would like to see that continue, and as far as I know, those plans are in place for that to continue, but we would certainly like to see that continue. Capital projects that I had submitted on the budget request are multi-purpose building, paving of our parking lots, which I also think is in the pipeline. Also, just, I would like to see the board consider at some point in the future, just a renovation of our school. Our school building is approaching about 55 years old. There have been some updates through the years, but just from an aesthetic standpoint, just from the standpoint of a lot of things that have just worn out, but then up mostly from a safety standpoint, just to try to make some improvements to the overall condition of our building. And I know there's studies being done and things of that nature that y'all are looking at those things. So, I just wanted to keep those things before you as just some of the needs that we face. We have almost 1,100 kids there every day, right across the parking lot here, and there's a lot of wear and tear. There's a lot of things that have to take place, and I'm proud of the faculty and staff that pulls that off every day, and I'm proud to work with them each day. But we would appreciate any consideration you could give us on those needs. Is that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Joyner, I will say, you know, I have the board, we have received some preliminary data from the studies that are out, and I had a conversation with Director Atkins and said that I was really surprised at some of the scoring that had come through from the campus and the shape of the building, and told him that we as a board, you know, we're all in here trying to do the best that we can do to serve the system and serve the county and get all the schools what they need. But my statement to Mr. Atkins and then, you know, in the firm, there's some things that we've got to look at and address at Lawrence County High School. I was unaware of some of the, some of the low scores of what you just presented tonight. So, the board, you know, I just affirmed to you that we are looking at the study and we do plan to do all that we can to get those things corrected.
I appreciate that, and I do have a tremendous amount of respect for each one of you. I know you got a tough job. I mean, there's a lot of students, there's a lot of buildings, there's a lot of things to take care of in this county, and I do appreciate that. I have a ton of respect for what you do for us each and every day. So, of course, I want to advocate for Lawrence County High School, and I appreciate any that you can do.
Absolutely. And we appreciate all of you and your staff as well, all of our teachers. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, same goes for Mr. Long. Mr. Long, after you get done with the recognition, if you will, hang out and see if the board has any questions for you in that regard. But E.O. Kaufman student recognition.
Thank you, Chairman Daniel, members of the board, and Mr. Atkins. We appreciate the opportunity to address you guys tonight. Tonight, our student recognition, we're recognizing Mr. Bradley Bibbins. Bradley embodies the values of an E.O. Kaufman Panther through his unwavering dedication, kindness, and strong moral character. He's a type of student who leads by example. He's always willing to step up and help with whatever's needed, whether that's picking up trash after breaks and events, assisting teachers with tasks, supporting his classmates. Bradley never hesitates to contribute. His actions show a deep sense of responsibility and a genuine care for his school community. In the classroom, Bradley approaches his work with determination and a very strong work ethic. While he may not always be top in his class, he continues to strive for self-improvement, setting those personal goals and working hard to achieve them. He's never complacent. He always looks for ways to grow academically and personally. His perseverance and dedication to bettering himself reflects a mindset that will serve him well as he enters adulthood. Beyond his academic efforts, Bradley stands out for his positive attitude, his mature nature, and he greets every day with enthusiasm, ready to take on the challenge with a smile. He never responds negatively to a request and is always eager to lend a helping hand. His teachers and peers recognize him as someone who can be counted on, not just for his hard work, but with his, for his kindness and his encouragement. Perhaps what sets Bradley apart most is his character. He treats everyone with kindness, respect, and creating a welcoming and supportive environment for those around him. His strong moral compass guides his actions, making him a role model for his peers. It's rare to find someone who has anything but positive things to say about him. It's hard, it's rare to find anyone who has anything but positive things to say about him, a testament to a genuine and caring person that he is. Bradley is a shining example of what it means to be an E.O. Kaufman Panther. His dedication, kindness, and relentless pursuit of self-improvement makes him an outstanding student and an even better person. We're proud to recognize him tonight for his contributions to the school and the impact that he's made on those around him.
Thank you. Thank you for that recognition, Mr. Long. Any questions in regards to E.O. Kaufman, or do you have anything you'd like to say to us?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you taking the opportunity tonight. A year ago, when I was here, things weren't, didn't look real good on paper, and I promised you guys a year ago that things would be better. And thanks to the students and the faculty and staff, hard work. E.O. Kaufman made some pretty good gains over the last school year. Achievement score was a three, our growth score was a four. Letter grade went up from a D to a C. Small gains, but truly fantastic gains. Kaufman's no longer identified as a TSI school, as we were a year ago today. We're no longer targeted for our students with disabilities or our white students. So, I want to take a moment in public to thank the students and the hard work of the faculty and staff for this fantastic accomplishment that's long overdue at Kaufman. So, I just wanted to take that minute to publicly thank those folks. My assistant principal's in here tonight, too. I would like you to come on up.
Mr. Long, I will say, you know, you're right, last year didn't look good, and y'all rolled up your sleeves. Those gains didn't happen by accident. They happened with good leadership, and they happened with hard work in the classrooms by the teachers and by the students. So, I'll give you a round of applause. So, thank y'all for that very much. The board have any questions for Mr. Long?
I was looking at the, we were going over the, some of the report that was given to us, and the utilization report of your building, 80%, 80%. Can you talk about that? Is that, do you feel like that's accurate? You still got some room to grow?
No, sir. I don't really feel like we have any room to grow. I really don't. That seems a little low to me, but I mean, there's space there, but it's maybe not good and usable space right now without a little bit of work, a little bit of renovation.
So, where are we at? And Mr. Tucker, you may talk to this later tonight, but on the bathroom project, and you want to wait and discuss that later on, or you want, I mean? Do you have, I mean, I don't know if you have any knowledge or anything to add to that.
I don't have a lot of new information. I do, it's another testament to the students and faculty and staff. I mean, we've been without that restroom for an academic year now. It'd be an understatement to say that I wish, I wish we could start working on that soon so we could have it ready for the next school year.
Well, you know, Mr. Long, and I'm sure if you've watched the meeting minutes or whatever, we deliberated over that and debated over that quite a bit, and, you know, we apologize that it's dragging on, but we are trying to do our best and do diligence with the pack taxpayers' dollars to make sure that we're getting done what is right to be done, and we didn't feel like reason. It is drug on, as we as a board didn't feel like what was presented to us was what we needed to be doing. So, Mr. Atkins and Mr. Tucker are working on getting that squared away. So, we'll get that update from Mr. Tucker later on in the meeting. So, please bear with us. It's on our, it's on our agenda. We'll get it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, student recognition, Summertown Middle School, Ms. Hallmark.
Hello, everyone. I am honoring Ms. Ellie Atkins tonight. When looking at this, looking at our mission this year at Summertown Middle School, our mission has been to inspire and empower students to achieve academic excellence, embrace their diversity or other diversity, and cultivate lifelong learning. This is what Ellie, we have seen in Ellie this year. This year Ellie embodies the spirit of an eagle, we would say. She has qualities such as strength. Ellie is not only a student athlete, she is just a big part of our school. And when I say student athlete, she is a student first. She's on state championship winning softball team, she has been in the league volleyball team, but she is a student first. And why we continue to say Ellie embodies that spirit is because her aspirations and potential that she has brought out this year. So Ellie has a lot she wants to do as she gets older. She's an eighth grader, and she has reached out to the adults that she knows in our building and outside of our building to look into what she can do for our future. She is on her own, planned meetings with school counselors, to plan high school, both high school counselor and our middle school counselor, and even looking at what she wants to do after school. And so that embracing of what we want at the middle school, there was no one else that we could pick to be our student today.
Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. I'm not really for, I'm supposed to face this way or this way? Which way am I supposed to sit? Well, I feel bad for them to have to look at my backside, but...
Better them than me.
Well, I think you're saying, there's only nine of y'all or ten. There's a lot more out here. So anyway, I do appreciate the opportunity to recognize what we're calling our Students of the Year. And we have three of those. It's been a hard decision to try to figure out who represents Summertown High School in a manner that we want to recognize them. And the three young ladies that we're going to recognize tonight, in my book, hopefully the parents would say the same thing, responsibility, dependability, trustworthiness, hard workers, and their pledge. I mean, just look at these three beautiful faces. And so, in all seriousness, they're just amazing young ladies. They're not involved in sports, they're involved in various clubs, organizations, they're going to graduate with honors, they're all three seniors. Chloe is, we call her the voice of Summertown in the mornings. She helps me on Friday mornings do announcements, so she can't, she comes in every morning and helps me with announcements. Isabella Prentice and Madeline Stags, come on up here. Chloe Edman, Isabella Prentice, and Madeline Stags. And then I will say a little more about them. So again, Chloe is the voice in the morning, so she helps do the pledge, student birthdays, thoughts of the day, that kind of thing. But she is amazing young lady, helps me with some of the Facebook posts. She's a Canva lady, I'm not, so she helps organize a lot of the pretty things that we put out on Facebook. And then Ms. Elabella Prentice, Isabella Prentice, she's a member of our student council, Beta Club. Again, her and Madeline, they take care of the music at the baseball games. And so if you have watched any sporting event of Summertown, these three are there. And it doesn't matter if it's at Summertown, if it's at Chatham County, or if it's at Murkisboro, if you, if there's a ballgame going on, these three are going to be there. They're going to be in the student section, they are just huge supporters of Summertown High School. And again, that's one of the many reasons that I think that we're a great school is because we have awesome young ladies that's here tonight. And then Madeline Stags, same things, a member, will graduate with honors, she's a member of the Beta Club, which is an academic institution. She wants to go to school, major in something in the medical field. Chloe wants to go to school to TCAT, she wants to go into cosmetology. And then Isabella, she's not a hundred percent sure what she wants to do, she's going to go to Columbia State thinking something along the line of business. But I told her, hey, you've got plenty of time to figure it out, there's a lot of adults that haven't figured out what they want to do right now. But again, these three young ladies are our Students of the Year, they do an outstanding job, and I can't tell you from a principal's standpoint, from their parents, how awesome they do at school. They're just amazing young ladies, and they make our job so much easier. And so I want to tell you, their parents, family that's here tonight, how awesome they are and how much I appreciate you sending young ladies like that to school with us. And so, board, our Students of the Year from Summertown High School.
Oh, do you want to speak? They said, do you want to say anything? Thank you ladies, for all that y'all do, appreciate that. All right, next item on the agenda, we'll give everybody just a moment to get out. I wasn't handed any public comments, Mr. Atkins, was there no public comments for tonight? Before we get into the true agenda, I do have a couple of...
I think before we adopt, are you ready to adopt the agenda?
No, I'm not, I'm going to make a change.
That's where we were going.
So I want to propose a change, two changes to the agenda. Under on your second page, line item two, under report items, I'd like to add a item F, which is project updates, and that will be Mr. Tucker to give us project updates for the system. Then I also would like to take line A, under line item two, report items, the school reports of Summertown Middle School and Summertown High School, I would like to move them all the way up to as soon as we adopt this agenda, and get them an opportunity to get before us and make those reports, and then they can go on about their business if they so choose.
Will you approve those changes?
I have the motion, we have a second. Are there any other? Was there any?
We need to remove under budget items, item E, oh no, I'm sorry, not E, item F.
F, the water heaters. Okay, good. So in that motion, and in that, we'll make those...
Add that correction to my motion.
I second that.
So to remove F under the budget items, that would be the LCHS water heater vendors. Any other changes to that? So we have a motion in the second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So that will bring us to school reports, Summertown Middle School, Dr. Haley Hallmark.
Hello again, everyone. Thank you for letting me come and talk about Summertown Middle School. If you don't mind, I'd like to just kind of give you a little bit of demographics. I know last year when I was up here, I kind of told you I'd talk about all the good and not complain, just kidding, or talk about challenges. Why don't we talk about some challenges and then some areas that we have implemented to see growth at Summertown Middle School. So if you will look down at the SMS demographics, still roughly the same, we're under two-hundred students this year, but still around two-hundred. We still have this same staff as we did last year. So we have eight teachers, four teachers in each grade, two exploratory teachers, one's PE, and one teaches computer science. We have one special education teacher, a school counselor. We have two now, special education assistants, one principal, myself. We have one behavior and special edu/ special education interventionist. We have two, oh, I'm sorry, fix that, we do special education assistants now, and we have one SRO. So these are all things that keep us going. To look at the challenges is that next line, the people that we share. Even though we have created this identity, created our own school, that was our mission last year, and as I said a few minutes ago, our mission this year is to focus on academics and focus on developing students that are at school to learn and beyond. It is a challenge to still share all of these bodies and these people in a school. It's a challenge for the people that hold these roles, like an RTI coordinator. You know, she works with both the middle school and the high school, and she has needs that Mr. Porter has and needs that I have, and she has to juggle how to get both of our needs done. Also with that, next year with the sixth grade move, that's going to add another eighty to a hundred students that will add more challenges to these people that are shared plate. Our nurse is shared, our librarian is shared. Most of the time, those of you familiar with an elementary school rotation, that librarian serves to teach classes, that librarian serves to give planning, that librarian serves many roles, and it's very difficult when this person is doing both. I know before, that we were seven twelve, before we split, and I'm sure there were challenges then too, but now when there are two heads of a house in one location, it's hard to please both of those people. We share a secretary, we share the attendance clerk, we share a bookkeeper, we share ISS. I'm so grateful that Mr. Porter lets us share that. We share UDL, so our high needs special education classes have kids from seventh grade through twelfth grade in there. We share a maintenance worker, so if something breaks in my end and something breaks in his end, he's got to go to what the most need is. We also share a band teacher, so this is another person that's not able to be in our rotation to be utilized as a teacher all day. We can get them maybe one period a day. This is the person that also would serve after-school activities for band. So with it being, trying to get it separate and two separate, that's very hard for one person, one person to be able to do. So those are some challenges that I'd like to present to you. I know next year moving to sixth, moving with the sixth grade into the other location, that will help alleviate some of the challenges we had last year. You know, last year we talked about just the bails, middle school wasn't able to have a bail system or have their own announcements because it was tied in. We also had high schoolers, even though we're in the circle, we're in other spots, we had high school students in and out of our area of the building. Those kind of things will be alleviated when we have our own building and all sixth, seventh, and eighth grade are in one location, unless they have to go to the nurse, or the office, or band, or they're in UDL, or they ride a special education bus, they're still going to have to go through Summertown High School. So like I said, wanted to touch base on some of the challenges that we have, just continuing to make us what we are. You've seen the school reports on, I'm sure Ms. Ridgeway's already gone over test scores and everything from last year, we didn't look good. It was not good. I came from Summertown Elementary, we always looked good there, and so we, I knew there was many changes that needed to be taken place in our day. Like I said earlier, last school year, the focus was on our identity as our standalone school at Summertown Middle School and creating that culture. I think we've done an excellent job with creating a culture, with separating it, with having our own events and giving that identity and that middle school feel. But our next step is to, let's get the academics where they need to be in that middle school. So one thing we did changing in our day, if you'd see the RTI Tier One, their response to intervention time, and I could do that separate if you wanted to, but on Mondays we focus on reading comprehension. So this is something that when I came over, I wanted to make a change, as being a parent of a student that had been through Summertown Middle School. And I did a survey with our parents and other community supporters about what are some needs that, and what are some changes that we need to do. It was a keep, stop, change. What should we keep doing, what should we stop doing, and what should we change? And that was one of the big things that I got from that survey was the way RTI was done. And so what we, like I said, have implemented is on Mondays, we do reading comprehension. So every student that is in a Tier One RTI, they're working on a program, either Achieve or working one-on-one with teachers or others, working on ways to improve reading comprehension. On Tuesdays, we focus on math application. So in the past, lots of times that was I-Ready or a computer program, we still use some computer program, but there is direct instruction also going on in that forty-five minutes of the day. On Wednesday, every student that is in Tier One, and teachers for the most part, still working on a few, are silent reading during that time period. On Thursdays and Fridays, we added some enrichment to those, so something to extend the learning for students that are in Tier One, something to excel them further than where they're at now. That's still growth, that's something we're still working on, that's something we're still weeding out, but at that time period, most everyone is working, like I said, working on something to enrich. At this time, on Thursdays and Fridays, if you were to come into RTI time, you would hear a lot of cheering, yelling, screaming on Thursdays and Fridays, because our teachers and our others in the building are working through some test prep with them, and had basically made the TCAT and interactive game show, and they rotate to different game shows. So we've got Jeopardy, we've got Family Feud, we've got, if you know Coach Woods, his trivia games are, you know, massive. You would hear a lot of screaming from his class. But that's what we're doing to try to just increase learning during that time and not be what it once was. We are very appreciative for Mastery Connect, that's something we did have last year, and we also have this year, and so three times a year, we're able to collect data to see where our students are in that standard-based data. If you were to look at Mastery Connect scores at the mock last school year, and you look at our TCAT schools, we're about right there. So that really gave us an insight, three times a year, to see if we are moving our students where they're at, where they need to be. As I said, Summertown Elementary tends to, has been producing high scores, so we have to grow those students, and that's something that we haven't been doing, and that is what we're working on. So now that our teachers have the data to know where those kids are and to know where those kids are supposed to be, we're able to adjust instruction to get there. So that is something that, like I said, we, we are so blessed to have it, we hope we continue to use it, and we use it a lot, and I could talk the rest of the night about that data, but y'all don't want the dorky side of me to come out, so we will stop that. And then going back to the other page about the student-friendly and clear learning targets. So this summer with our Principals Academy, we worked for several days on creating that vision and that plan for the school year. And so this is our plan, that in every class, every day, this is what we expect, and I've put in where these expectations come from. So we are focusing on delivery of instruction domain in Project Coach. So part of that is that the students, where they should be able to go in a classroom and know what's expected of them, how they're going to do it, and how do they know that they've been successful at getting there? So it's not just like, hey, today I will do this. It's today I'm doing this so that I can do this, and I'll know I've got it when this happens. I know that's very generic and you see it a lot, and we didn't make it our own in that, but that is an expectation that we expect to see in our classrooms. In our turn, we hope that leads to more student ownership. You guys saw Ellie earlier, that, I think some of that is inside Ellie, but I think some of that is what we've been doing to help our students start taking ownership of their next steps and ownership of their learning. With that, we've also implemented a PLC and some guidance program with our teachers. We have the second and fourth Tuesday, that's a protected time, we started that September 2nd, and unless we've missed school, it's happened on those Tuesdays. So if you need to see me on a Tuesday, and it's one of those days, they'll turn you away, or they'll tell you to come back, because I'm in my ELA PLCs those days. I have, I'm blessed that we have people in the leadership, on my leadership team, so we have some... we have someone that takes care of social studies, gets to go in social studies classroom and work with those students in those PLC. I have another math person, was previously math, does great, she works with our math teachers, and then our school counselor works with our exploratory teachers to help better that culture. We're not forgetting about the culture, but that's theirs. We meet for a minimum of 40 minutes, and like I said, it's grouped by common planning times. That's something that we've implemented this year that we didn't have access to last year, and that's something that all of our teachers have really expressed to get the benefit, because with that, you know, you have one seventh grade math teacher, one eighth grade math teacher, if they didn't get to be together, there was not a time for them to be in their like subject. And so by us doing that, it allowed them to work together, it allowed them to vertically align some of the curriculum, it allowed them to be able to just have those conversations of what would you do with this, and how would you do this? And if we didn't put that into the, the schedule, they would not have that time unless I made them stay after school. And y'all know, those, I look at some of you that've been teachers, you know how hard that is to get real meat out of that time period? So those are just, like I said, some challenges I wanted to share with you, and then some of the things that we are doing and digging in to better those, those scores at our school for testing and, and help our students be successful.
Thank you for that, Ms. Hallmark. I would ask if you would hang around, because I would like to bring you back up after Mr. Porter gets done, because one of the agenda items that we've got in the later part of the meeting is this sixth grade move, and I'd like to discuss or have, give both of y'all an opportunity together to, let's talk about the, the switch. A lot of things will be taking place up there this, this summer, and I'll just give y'all an opportunity in front of us board, let's, let's talk through that together briefly when he gets done with his. Any questions for Ms. Hallmark? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Porter?
Thank you again. I do appreciate the opportunity just to, to speak on the behalf of Summertown High School, some of the challenges that we're, we're facing, and also a lot of the successes that we're having as well. If anytime you have a question, please ask me, I'm going to try to make this as brief as possible, but I do want to share just as openly and honestly as I can be, some of the challenges that we face. Our ACT scores, when you look, if you've noticed, our ACT scores for this graduating class was 18.2. Our goal's a 21. Last year, our ACT scores was 17.9, so our ACT scores did go up a little bit. They're projected next year to be 20.3, but again, our goal is a 21, so we're not where we want to be as far as ACT scores. Growth scores in our English department, we were a Level Two. That's not where we want to be. We want to be, at least be a Level Three, so we're, we're addressing some areas there. Biology, we're a Level One, and again, that's just in growth. How many students are growing from the beginning of the school year till they take the end-of-course test? And so again, biology was a Level One. Have a great teacher there, and she is working very hard to resolve some of the issues that may be causing those scores to be low. Chronic absenteeism, I know Mr. Atkins spoke on that at the principals' meeting, that is just an issue, I think it's countywide. Summertown High School, last year, 18.4% of our kids were chronically absent, so that means basically they're, they're missing roughly 17 to 18 school days throughout the year. Man, I'll tell you, just really don't know what the right answer is for that. You know, we have truancy meetings, kids just do not want to come to school, and as far as chronic absenteeism, kids that go to the doctor, they get excused days, and I mean, we've had kids that's had 30, 40 doctor's notes through, throughout the course of a year. So that is an issue, that is too high, and so roughly 18.4%, that, that's basically 70 kids that we have out of 361 that's chronically absent. And of course, you know as well, do if kids, if kids are not in classroom, then they can't be learning. So that's something that, don't really have a whole lot of answers there. I know Mr. Atkins, and I think the board will be looking at some policies to try to help with that, and I like the direction that I think the board's going to be moving that, and I think it will have, the attendance policy will have a lot more teeth to try to get kids to be at school. One of the things that I mentioned last year is a challenge, and to me, it can be a challenge, but it can also be a success too, is just inexperience. Nine of our 30 teachers have four years of less experience, and I'm going to say seven of those nine did not go to school to be a teacher. So they're still trying to figure out, okay, procedures as far as running a classroom, the correct way to assess student learning, that kind of thing, but also at the same time, they bring a lot of fresh ideas, that is a pro too. So that, that's kind of a, a positive and a negative to us, but when, when you think about nine out of 30, and five of those nine are in core areas. And then one of the last challenges I'm going to speak to is just relocating. Most of you know, we're moving 14 teachers from what used to be the old middle school when I was there, they're going to be moved to the circle. And so we have to move 14 teachers over the summer, completely relocate them. And I don't know that, that the challenge is going to be that much, you know, you always wonder about construction and just trying to make sure things are done in a timely manner so we can start school. When August rolls around, we're ready to go, and there's a lot of moving parts that go in that, so that, that, that's just something that, you know, concerns me a little bit, but again, it, it'll be good. That's the challenges. Lot of successes at Summertown High School. Very honored to be the principal there. We have just an outstanding faculty staff, student body, the three ladies that were here, a lot of those young ladies and young guys that are there, they're, they're, they're pleasant to be around every single day. Our staff is willing to do whatever, whatever it takes to make sure that we're meeting every need of the students that walk through the door at Summertown High School. Very pleased with some of our report card data, I'm not going to go over every single one of those, but last year, our letter grade was a C from the State Department, and out of a score of one to five roughly, we were a 3.4. This year, we were three tenths of a point from being an A. So we were a B this year, and we were a 4.2. And so doing a lot of good things. Our achievement scores, we were a Level Five school on achievement. Our English scores, from achievement wise, almost 50% of our kids met or exceeded expectations. That's, that's really an unbelievable number. They did a really good job there. We're a Level Five school. As far as college and career readiness goes, we were Level Three in, in growth, in the growth of the bottom 25%. So our school report card's broken down into achievement, it's broken down into growth, growth of the bottom 25% of your kids, and then also college and career ready. And so when you average all those together, that's where our letter grade comes from, and we were a 4.2 for this past year. So very pleased with the progress that's been made over the last year. It's not where we want to go, we want to be, for sure, we want to be higher than that. We would love to be an A, and so we're, we're trying to address some of those areas that we feel like that we can improve in. Athletics, our, all of our athletic teams except for one made the state playoffs. So our, our student athletes are excelling up there. Volleyball is a Final Four. We had two girls that competed in the girls' individual state tournament. Our boys' golf team participated in the state tournament. Our cross-country boys and girls participated in the state tournament. Football made the state playoffs, and of course, girls' basketball, as Mr. Daniel mentioned at the beginning, the Elite Eight. So very proud of, of our athletics at Summertown High School. One of the things I want to thank the board on the cosmetology program, and I know Ms. Watson, when she was still our CTE director, was very helpful in making sure that we got that program up and going at Summertown High School, and it's been awesome, and so very excited about what Retastimation's going to do there. It's already paying off, paying huge dividends for the young ladies and some of the guys that are in cosmetology, but I'm thankful of that. Ms. Terry Perry, she was our Teacher of the Year. Ms. Perry was at Summertown High School 26 years ago when I started education, and so she does a remarkable job. She's a foreign language teacher at Summertown, and so I appreciate her, along with all the other 52 faculty and staff members, as, as I've already mentioned. And just one of the things that's just really neat to me, we have what's called Spirit of the Eagle. Spirit of the Eagle, we have a couple of teachers that organize this, and they do some fundraising throughout the year, and they raise money, and then it, when it gets close to Christmas time, they do a Christmas store. And so we get names of kids that are given to these ladies, and of course, we ask the kids that, hey, are you good with participating in the Christmas store? And of course, they're all very thankful to do that, but what's neat to me is those kids get to go into that Christmas store and pick out something, of course, for themselves, but then they also pick out something for their parents, and if they have siblings, and so it is just an amazing thing, and the community donates money, and again, we do some cake auctions and just different things throughout the year, that all that money goes directly into that Spirit of the Eagle for the Christmas store. And so it's just pretty neat to watch kids and to see how thankful those kids are to get a pair of socks and to know that they can get their sibling something, and so man, it's just, that's one of the most favorite, I mean, that's one of my favorite times, is just watching kids be able to go in and participate in that, in the Christmas store. So that's, that's a neat thing that we do at Summertown High School. Again, can't tell you how much I appreciate the board and the, the funding that's been allocated to Summertown High School over the last year. The football field is making tremendous progress. The bleachers are almost, I mean, they're getting close to being done. I know they started laying the block on the fieldhouse and things, and so that, that's moving along, I'm very thankful for that. The 100 building, the makeover that's going to take place this summer will be, will be awesome. And so again, I appreciate the board putting money in to that building, because that, I'm not for sure how the circle is. I mean, it's, it's old, and it's definitely in need of a facelift, and so that's going to be, that's going to be a huge plus for our school. The resurfacing of the parking lots, that's going to take place in the summer, it's supposed to, hopefully, we was hoping it would get done during spring break, but the sidewalks didn't get done, but the sidewalks are done now, and so hopefully that's going to get, that's going to take place this summer. That will be a huge plus as well. I think it's going to clean everything up around there, and the theater roof is, they're, they're finally done with that. They've, they've done a lot of work, metalwork around the gym, the gutters, the soffit, and it's made the, the whole school look better. And so I just want to tell you how much I appreciate y'all putting funds into Summertown High School. And really, the only thing, long-range project, something that I, I would just like to bring to your attention, every single person realizes the need for a gym at Summertown High School, and I know there's a lot of other needs here, but that is definitely something that needs to take place. And I would just leave you with this. I don't know that the Summertown basketball teams have ever been able to host a, a district tournament or a region tournament, because that gym is not sufficient as far as seating goes. And so you think about the disadvantage, that those kids have never been able to host a district tournament game or a region game. And so that's, that's pretty much the, the successes and challenges, and like I said, I know there's a lot of needs at everywhere else, and I fully understand, and you've got a very difficult job to try to figure out, okay, what's the top priority, and but again, I just want you to know how much I appreciate you willing to serve, the sacrifices that you make, taking time away from your family. So again, I appreciate everything that you do. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Coach Porter, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Y'all's fields and gyms, to kind of caveat off what you're saying, you're also sharing those with the middle school, correct?
Absolutely, we are.
If you could have expressed to the board kind of the logistics constraints of that, the hours, the late hours they have to spend?
Absolutely.
Because y'all, that's, that's significant to y'all.
It is. And going back 26 years ago, when I coached middle school up there, it's always been a tremendous issue, and I, I hate for our middle school kids, because they get bounced all over the place. I mean, they, sometimes they can't practice because high school takes precedent over the middle school programs, and Mr. Mabry at the elementary school has always been very generous for the most part, but sometimes they have things going on. But it is a very difficult job to allocate, you know, which team gets to practice today, maybe not get to practice, and so it's, I don't know of many other schools around that has to share a gym from their seventh grade all the way up to their 12th grade, but that is a very difficult challenge, especially when you have middle school volleyball, high school volleyball, middle school and high school basketball. So it's definitely difficult.
So the multipurpose gym, are y'all using it at all?
Well, the, we're, we're still waiting, the floors and the basketball goals. And so right now, softball has gone in there just a little bit, but we have tried to discourage them from going in there a lot, because our netting is not up, and we don't want softballs hitting the metal and damaging the walls right now. So it's been used just a little bit, but, but not a whole lot right now. But that, that will help tremendously, especially with middle school and high school both, when that, when that is fully functional.
All right. Any other questions in regards to the high school alone? In just a moment, I'll bring Dr. Hallmark back, back up, and we'll discuss this, this wop and any concerns, but as far as Mr. Porter into the high school. You know, Ms. Porter, I would tell you, I've been in the ear of County Executive Morgan, other county exec, county commissioners, I know other board members, we all are aware and, and would love nothing more than to be able to build a gym.
Yes, sir.
Up there. And that is, I mean, we, we want it to.
Understand. Yes, sir.
We're, we're going to push it as we can and when we can. One thing I made a note of, and you had mentioned about new teachers, and many, seven out of the nine come out of the field, didn't go to school to, to get an education degree. So I just jotted a note, and I guess this would probably bounce toward Mr. Atkins, but in those scenarios, is there any programs for extra, you know, summer school type programs for a teacher? Can we, you know, give them another couple of weeks and, and put them in the, in a classroom with other veteran teachers and say, hey, okay, how'd your year go? I mean, is there, you know, is there some training opportunities? Can we find some funding? Is anything like that exists? Is that a terrible idea? I mean, is there just, would it benefit a brand-new teacher to have a few more weeks on the payroll with another, you follow my drift?
Absolutely.
You get what I mean, is anything like that, is that crazy, or?
Well, I, I just know that some of these teachers that, that maybe have the, the right certification, but they, they're not highly qualified as far as having education courses. They have to, over, I think they have three years to get those education courses completed. But like I said, some of them may not have any teaching experience at all. I mean, so any type of job shadowing they could do would be great, but you know, sometimes, I went through the teaching program, but I don't know if you're ever really fully prepared to walk into that classroom. It's almost trial by fire, and you have to try to figure out what's working, what's not working, and we try to get all of our younger teachers to go and do peer observations with other teachers so they can, and all those young teachers, we try to assign them more veteran teachers, so they can try to see how a professional teacher conducts their classroom and try to get some ideas from them.
Is there room for improvement in that regard? I mean, of being able to provide more mentorship to?
Mr. Daniels, I, I don't know that I've ever heard any districts doing anything like that. I mean, there might be some things out there that I'm not aware of, but I, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Well, just trying to close that gap to catch them up or get them.
Absolutely.
Because that's going to help you get your classrooms performance better.
Sure.
Ms. Glass?
And is one way we utilize our district diversity and literacy coaches is going into those classes and providing, they law the lessons and help plan with them and provide additional support.
And, and you know, I've also been a part of conversations where, you know, I, I know highly qualified and skilled teachers throughout the district, not just at Summertown, but the few that I know throughout the district, and one thing that I've always found in common with these teachers who are high-scoring and highly qualified, they know how to do their data and utilize the, the information that they get year in and year out that says, I need to adjust this, and I need to adjust that. Does, you know, I dare say, not all of our teachers have got that skill set of, of being able to take that data and say, oh, well, at this, you know, do we have things in place to help teach people how to use the data to, to curb their teaching?
I, I, if you don't care, I'll speak on this, and I know we might move on, but Ms. Glass alluded to this, the, the coaches, the English coaches and math coaches that the district has brought on over the last couple of years have been a tremendous help, because, you know, I, I know what good teaching looks like, but I'm not a math guy, I'm a science guy, and so I, I can see some of the strategies that they're using, but as far as, are they, is the rigor where it needs to be? Are they teaching the, the standard to the depth it needs to be? I can't talk that, but these career, I mean, these coaches can, these math coaches can go in and help these young inexperienced folks where they're struggling to say, hey, this is what you need to really start focusing on, and I know Mr. Patrick has worked with some of our math teachers, and he's done an outstanding job to try to help those younger teachers to get better.
Do we have enough of that in y'all's estimate? What, no?
No. Did you expect any of that? No, we do not. They are very limited on all they can do, especially when you have high needs.
Well, and I think, I think as a system, and probably throughout the, the country, we're probably seeing a, a shift in, generational shift, right? Of course, I guess that's always there, and you've got some leap, but it seems like as I've, there's a lot more of these younger college ones, fresh out of college or a few years, I, I mean, some of the older ones, generation is getting ready to retire. And so I just wondered if we need to focus, with, with Mr. Atkins focused on what we could do to get more of these coaches. could do to get more of these coaches and get them into our, okay, thank you for that. Any, any questions?
Can we go back and visit something just?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Dr. Shannon asked about the gym, and you may be gonna talk about this before you talk about the move, so you can wait later, but can we get Haley's input on the gym situation?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm fixing to bring her back up and, and talk to both of them, right? Right, just, it just, any questions for Mr. Porter specifically on Summertown High School?
I got a question on, uh, it, it concerns me that we're sharing employees. And can, just briefly, can you speak to that and, um, the, the time restraints and so forth? I, I didn't know this was an issue.
Right. Um, and I, I will speak to the, there are some challenges for sure, uh, but the one thing that we, the one thing that Mr. Atkins allowed us to do last year was to hire, uh, a receptionist. Uh, because before then, we, we had a lady up front that, man, this did a whole lot of things. She answered the phone, she was the attendance secretary for the high school and middle school. I mean, she wore many, many hats. And so we've hired a receptionist now that pretty much just takes care of answering the phone. And then so we, we do share the receptionist, we share the attendance secretary, uh, we share our, um, financial, um, our financial secretary, Ms. Garland. And so there's always gonna be challenges, that is for sure. I mean, I know just from talking to Ms. Garland, uh, she has to flip back and forth, and Ms. Jessica, you, you might can speak more to that than I can, but the two different programs. And so depending on if a middle school teacher needs to come in and needs to do a P.O., that she's gotta flip back and forth between two separate programs, the middle school fund versus the high school fund. And so, uh, it, it's, it is definitely a little more time consuming. The same thing with the attendance secretary, if it's a parent of a middle school comes in, she has, if she's on the high school platform, she has to, to log into the middle school platform to figure out where that kid is and vice versa. So it, it, it is more time consuming on those folks that are having to, to pull both of those duties. Absolutely.
I would ask Mr. Atkins, if you will, take a hard look at, at all these shared roles and, and tell the board your recommendation on, do we need to look at, uh, solo in, in any of these positions or, hey, then, you know, just take a look at this and give us a report. All right, Ms. Hallmark, if you would, come, come forward and let's talk, uh, I know we're dragging on, please bear with us, just a lot of stuff we gotta discuss. So yeah, the swap, um, let us hear your concerns, let us hear, I mean, you got the floor, tell us.
Can I say something about the gym first?
Yes, yes.
Not only, you know, all the sports things, but any student or parent with a disability can't access our gym. Next year, I'll have three students in a wheelchair. And so right now, and, and I'm, I didn't want to say this, I didn't want to tell, this is students' business, but like right now, when we have a pep rally, we close the gym off so that that student can safely transition to get to a spot, to be able to be in with his peers. Because if, you know, you're in middle school, you don't want to participate from the gym floor, you want to be with everyone else. Um, he's also, the student now is a manager of our basketball team. And so he comes to our ballgames and he can't, there's, it's really not safe, other than our SRO standing with him and near him so that he can watch a game. And then we kind of walk off the floor so that he can get over to his team. I mean, that, that's a big need, our community need, our elderly people can't come to our games. It's not just in school and sports, it's, it's just right for a human to be able to be in, in everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so yeah, let me, let us hear your, uh, your concerns or, or, you know, what, what you got on this, uh, swapping over, you had already mentioned to it a little bit, and moving these 14 teachers, I mean, what, uh, what you, what would you like for us to?
When Mr. Atkins first mentioned something like this, I'll just be honest, selfishly, I, I mean, we're, we're fixing to levy a building that has been re- remodeled and it's very, very nice. The rooms are big, much, much bigger than where we're fixing to transition to, to the circle. But financially, what's best for the system is for us to do that. It just makes sense, uh, for us to do that. Uh, and so there's, there's no doubt, hey, is it gonna be somewhat of an inconvenience for us? Yeah, it is. But that's the best thing that needs to happen because we don't need to be building a new middle school that's gonna cost 40 or 50 million dollars because some people don't want to do selfishly move out of a building. Because it's gonna help the high school in a sense, because right now we have kids in four separate buildings. Uh, so when we do make the move to the circle, we will only be in three buildings. Um, and so it's, it, it makes sense logistically for us to do it. Um, and of course, I mean, anytime that you have maybe six through 12 on the same campus, there's always gonna be issues, there's probably always gonna be concerns, but you know, that, that's part of it. Uh, and we, we've got good folks, she has good folks, I mean, we work well together. Uh, we, we, we can make it happen and, and we will make it happen. Um, and like I said, if you ask every school in this county, is that thing's perfect? No, but that's just part, as a teacher, you just adapt and adjust, and that's what we're gonna do, uh, because I feel like that's the best thing for us to do for our school system, is to make that move. And we're gonna do it. Um, and so, uh, I'm appreciative because we're gonna go into a building that's gonna be completely redone and it's gonna look really, really nice. Some of the rooms are gonna be a little bit smaller, I mean, I, it is what it is. Uh, right now, our numbers will allow us to, to fit in those buildings. Uh, we're still gonna have plenty of space. Uh, and I know Mr. Daniels alluded to the fact, this study, and I don't really know all, yet since a lot of our space has not been utilized. And like I told him, yes, it hasn't been utilized. I mean, if, if we were at capacity, there's no way that we could bring 80 more kids onto our campus. So we do have some room to be able to accommodate another grade level coming to our school. And so this first year will be a transition from my standpoint, but I mean, it'll be fine. In a couple of years, I mean, it'll all, it'll all be good. And so again, I just appreciate some of the decisions that you all have to make, they're never easy, uh, and so you can't make everybody happy and I fully understand that, but I appreciate, uh, what you do and just know that we will be fine.
Um, and to advocate for my school at this, we are, yes, moving to a better building, but we are getting none of the, the fancy new things. Not that we need new things, but it's still what is left over. Either we're taking what we have with us, which is old and not necessarily what's best or need, or, you know, Mr. Porter, Mr. Porter, not against him, but what's left from what the high school teachers don't need. So yes, we are getting a nice building, but there's nothing else coming with that. Um, it, it will make it better for us because right now we have roughly 200 kids in a circle and those things at all times. With high school, you know, you don't have 200 kids at one central location at all times, so the big, the bigger space and the more room, yes, will be beneficial to us, but only are we able to fit over there with that multipurpose building and those two classrooms, which we have to have finished before the school year starts.
Yeah. So do y'all have, will you have two separate intercom systems or anything like that with this change?
Hopefully, it's supposed to be.
Is that part of the change?
Yes.
The intercom system?
We have a different bell, the bell system is included.
Bells and.
So I have one more question. The, um, the circle, you're moving 14 teachers to the circle?
Well, we have 14 teachers in that building, 10 of those will move to the circle.
Okay.
Uh, and then we have other teachers that are moving, shifting around.
Okay.
Uh, so, yes. So we have 14 teachers in the old ones in the building right now.
And we have multiple shared in rooms right now. Like I am shared with the intervisionists, we have the same space, our special ed, high school special education and middle school special education are shared right now. So there is not enough that everybody has a space as it is.
And like the utilization thing, like, right now, our wellness teacher has a classroom, he's not gonna have a classroom, doesn't necessarily need one. I mean, they can make new, new gym, and so that's what I'm saying, there's, we've had some luxuries because we've had some open space for those teachers to have an additional classroom. Um, and so it's, it just is what it is. A lot of, a lot of your, a lot of your PE wellness teachers do not have classrooms, their classrooms in the gym, so, um, that's not uncommon.
Which for middle school, ours teach RDI, so they need a space to have lessons.
Please express to all of your faculty and staff, you know, our, our appreciation for, and I appreciate y'all's, uh, attitude, positive outlook on this move, and nobody likes that kind of thing. Um, I will tell you and, and, you know, Mr. Tucker will attest, I for one, in this board, have, we've discussed and been on, on his case about timeline. Matter of fact, we set a precedent last month to have these companies that are doing our work, are supposed to be in our meetings monthly, giving us a timeline update, because we want to make sure, just like when we kick off the EO coffin, whoever gets that, they're gonna be in here answering to this board every month where they're at on their timeline, to make sure that they, we are done as expediently as we can get it done and get y'all back up to, up and running in business. Now, we all know the world of construction, or at least have a little idea, things, things get derailed from time to time, but we will push from our seats as best as we can to get y'all all that we can. So thank y'all for that, I appreciate it. Any last questions?
Yeah, just, what's the least intrusive way for me to get like a, a chance to go down and see your school? I know y'all are busy, I don't wanna just, I don't wanna show up. What was that?
I've been, they're very welcoming.
Yeah, did I just send an email or something? Is that all right? Okay. I just wanna see.
Absolutely.
I'm better with vision.
I understand, me too. I don't, I don't, I think I failed to mention, they started, uh, the painting and the lights in the gym lobby and the theater lobby, that was completed this past week, so all the gym lobby's been repainted, all new lights, ceiling tile, it looks really, really good. And so that was finished up, I think, Monday or Tuesday of this week, but it looks really, really good. So again, appreciate that.
Great. Thank y'all very much. Keep up the great work. Okay, we'll move back to the front page. We got through the recognitions, we've done the adoption of the agenda, all entertain a motion to, uh, under consent items, um, approval of minutes, approval of business report, approval of volunteers, approval of overnight field trips. Uh, there's the list of the field trips.
Motion to approve through number 11.
I have a motion to approve, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. That'll bring us back to item number two, report items, we've done the school reports, uh, personnel report. Director Atkins?
Mr. Chairman, uh, everything is in there that we're aware of. Mrs. Thompson and Mrs. Burks keep that information and, uh, our, you should have everything in there, but if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those.
Any questions to Mr. Atkins on the personnel report? Directors update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, let me say thank you to Mr. Porter and Dr. Hallmark for being here, and Mr. Long and, uh, Mr. Joyner earlier. Uh, Mr. Long and Mr. Joyner had to do that video that we asked the board to do, and I thought they did a great job of presenting that information and sharing. I appreciate the board giving them opportunity to speak on their successes tonight and some challenges. Uh, budget season is here, Mrs. Elig and I are, uh, we're always working the budget, but I have had two meetings now with County Executive Morgan, he, very encouraged by his commitment to education and some of the things that Mrs. Elig and I are putting in the budget proposal for next school year. The county commission, as I said last month or a time before, uh, very supportive of education in Lawrence County, we're blessed to have that. That is not the case everywhere you go. And when I'm in rooms with other directors and they're talking about some of the challenges that they face from their local leaders, um, I'm very encouraged and pleased with how lucky we are to have a supportive group of folks. Our four o'clock session earlier about the growth and capacity, that, that is underway, it's continuing to, to get information. I think we've gotten several bits. I will remind the board of the March 31st at 6 o'clock at Lawrence County High School, that, that's a community event. It's not a, um, Q and A necessarily, it is just an informative session to gather some information so that the group conducting the study, MGT, can help deliver more information to the board. So that will be at 6 o'clock at Lawrence County High School. This process should be completed by May of 2025, so we're looking forward to getting that information. And later tonight, you'll be asked to make a decision on that move from Summertown Elementary to the middle school. And I think we've proven and shown that there will be utilization and capacity decreases there that will help that school, that community, get those kids in more classrooms and off the stages and some of the other challenges. And we have met with Mr. Porter and Dr. Hallmark several times, making sure that, that we haven't missed anything. There's a chance that we've overlooked something that no one realized might be an issue, sure, but we've, we've had good conversations. Dr. Hallmark and I had one yesterday about personnel, so we're, it's ongoing. It's gonna take us a while to get that, that middle school model in place, but we are working towards that. In just a few weeks, our teachers will, um, take on state mandated testing. Happens every year, every spring, puts a lot of stress on our teachers, a lot of worried parents with some of the new laws, a lot of work on our district team, uh, but it comes down to these teachers each and every day are pouring into our kids, they're, they're putting their shoulder into it, they're doing the best they can. And as Mrs. Alexander talked to earlier tonight about recognizing a difference maker, you see Mr. Porter recognizing kids, you see the other schools bringing kids in, uh, test scores are important, but at the end of the day, we're in the kid business and we should be doing everything we can for our kids of Lawrence County. And we've got dedicated men and women who I'm honored to work side by side with and, and serve each and every day. Lawrence County's blessed, Lawrence County's blessed to have the people we have. This board has done a lot of great things the last several years with salary. Why would you not want to be in Lawrence County? It's a great place to be. Appreciate all the, the work at the central office, our principals, our teachers, our bus drivers, custodians, as I tell them every Friday in a recorded message, each and every day they have an opportunity to make a difference in the life of a child. And I think Mrs. Alexander's presentation earlier and some of the other things, this confirms what we know, teachers are difference makers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Mr. Atkins? Does the board, or y'all, do y'all receive, does everybody receive your weekly, uh, report or update, uh, the video?
I think so.
Yeah, okay. I encourage you, if you don't, uh, if you haven't taken the time, watch those, they're, they're very informative and appreciate you doing that. Um, no questions for the director, we'll look at the next line item, S E A.
I don't really have an update about the issue I brought before you. Tommy Leathers is looking into it with DEA, and he was going to, um, meeting, he was gonna talk to some of the people at the State Department. But with spring break and everything that's happened, um, you know, we haven't had a chance to get together.
Okay.
So right now, I don't really have an update on anything with the pre-K issue.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Uh, just maybe one comment, and, and Dr. Glass, if I misspeak on this, that issue was not a Lawrence County school system, that is a issue with the state and how they've developed the formula or lack thereof, but the, the issue is not something our folks are responsible for. Uh, that, that is a state issue that we're working through.
Okay, thank you.
I will add to that, Dr. Glass has reached out to the State Department for guidance, and then I've reached out to the State Department on the data side of it to request, um, their data, and neither one of us have received any guidance back.
Surprise, surprise. All right, thank you. T L E, any legislative news, Dr. Chan?
Yeah, so we're in a full session right now. There's the House Education Committee met this week, House K through 12 Subcommittee met, House Education Instruction Subcommittee's closed, and the House Education Administration Subcommittee is closed also. From the Senate side, the Senate Education Commit, Committee met this week as well. There's just a, a long list of things that I'm not gonna bore you guys with. I do believe that there, you're getting the emails right, y'all received those.
Yes.
So if you wanna go through, you can look at each bill, but there's a lot going on right now educationally at the.
Any significant curveballs that we need to be mindful of?
Well, uh, one was that I've been reading, following, it was more for the T.S.B.A. It looks like, I don't know if you are following that or anything, but nothing that affects us directly. They, they were looking at House Bill seven ninety-three, which was about enrollment, uh, a few things based on enrollment, but nothing that I see that's coming that's going to, you know, adjust us to implement any new policy or anything like that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And Dr. Shannon, you may know the status of this. I haven't, uh, followed it closely in the last week or so. Back to a point that Chairman Daniel brought up earlier about the four-day work week. There is, or was, a bill that was going to allow schools, districts to determine, you can use hours that make up a school year or days that make up a school year. Right now, the state regulates by you must do a hundred and eighty days. There's the opportunity that you must do a hundred and eighty days or you must do the hour equivalent. So you could go longer in less days. And so that is something that I've been following to see where that, where that lands.
Let me follow up, because I saw some eyebrows raised. That discussion was during the, uh, the open session, uh, work session. And that's fine, no, it's public knowledge, but it, you know, one of those bullet points that we're talking about is the paradigm of how we think and how we do things in Lawrence County school system. And I did bring up the idea of what would a four-day work week look like for Lawrence County school system. So, um, that's where Mr. Atkins is speaking to. So yeah, I mean, the, the school board is looking at all kinds of different things to try to make life better and easier for Lawrence County school system, so thank you for that. Um, item F that we added to the agenda of project updates, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Tucker.
Okay, I'll start with the, uh, Tyler Dawes couldn't be here, so he, he did give me an update today on the football field. I was actually on the site today. Um, I'm usually up there two or three times a week, but I was actually there today. Uh, Mr. Porter has alluded to some of this already, but the block work on the field house has started. Um, we're looking at about a month to five weeks to all the block work is completely finished, and then they'll move on to the trusses and the roof. We made decisions this week about all the colors, uh, the metal for the roof, all, all the paint colors for the, for the block. It's a split-faced block building that will be painted on the outside.
On that decision, who?
That the school was involved with that.
Thank you.
Uh, the well pumps have been installed, uh, these, these two pumps, uh, one will, they actually had to have two. One is for the irrigation system for, for the field itself, and the other pump, they had to put one in, uh, it's for the cooling tower at the elementary school. Those have been installed. They're working this week on the electrical for those to get those up and running. Uh, L.U.S. was there actually today. They had a lot of people on site today working on electric on the site. Uh, the light poles, uh, the bases have been installed. Uh, the poles themselves and the lights will be here in late April, um, and after that, they'll go up. L.U.S. will be responsible for, for installing those. Uh, the remaining fencing and the irrigation, uh, and the sod is on the horizon, is, is coming soon. We, we needed to wait until the bleachers have been installed, uh, because we didn't want to interfere with getting on the field, um, and messing up some sod. And plus, we had to have the, we got to get the wells up and running so we can water that sod. So, uh, we should have water really soon with the electrical, uh, being, being worked on, on those pumps. And the bleachers themselves started, uh, last week during spring break. Uh, the, the visitor side bleachers are, I would say almost a hundred percent done. There's just a few little things they've got to do on the visitor side. Uh, the home side's about seventy-five percent done. Uh, and if you haven't been by there, it's, it changed, it looks totally different. Bleachers on there, you can actually see what it's going to, going to look like. Uh, the press box is on site, uh, this coming week, uh, they'll have that. That'll be, really, that's the biggest part. Uh, there's some aesthetics to the vis, to the home side, uh, bleachers that has to be finished and the fencing around. They may have that done by tomorrow, uh, but the press box, uh, a crane has to be brought in and that, that'll be done, uh, supposed to be done next week. Um, any questions about the football field?
Uh, no, are we tapping into the water treatment facility for soup, for wastewater there?
Yes, yes. Uh, all that infrastructure is in place for that. Uh, all that work has been previously done on, on the side. Uh, the, uh, we're still, time, timeframe is still in line. We don't, you know, we don't.
Before to, to kickoff of opening day?
The fall season this fall.
Okay.
Yes, so we're still hopeful that all that's going, everything, everything keeps falling in place and we can get that building dried in. Uh, a lot of the work on the inside is going to go really fast. Of course, the side, there's a lot of cleanup and some paving, things, finished paving, that, that's all very handy. Um, as far as Loretta, the, the bleachers at, at Loretta High School, the pad, uh, bleacher pad's being completed. Uh, Lawrenceburg Utilities has, has been on site working on some preliminary work for the lighting there. Uh, the week of April the seventh, uh, which is the week after next, uh, bleachers should be arriving there, and so that work, some of that work will be started there. Uh, Mr. Porter already talked about the circle renovation, uh, Slater Construction work during spring break, and they finished up the first couple of days of this week, and they completed the, uh, lobby of the, uh, of gym and the theater hallway. They, uh, did the, they dropped some new LED lights and paint, so that looks really good, it's finished. That'd give you an idea, if you see that, it'd give you an idea of what the rest of the hallways are going to look like in that, in that building. Uh, we've been working on the timeline with them. Uh, they're very aware of, of, of the type timeframe that we have this summer. Uh, we're working on Hallmark and Porter on the move and what needs to happen those last few weeks of school, so we can turn the building over to, to Slater, uh, so that they can get in there and do their work. Uh, they've been on site numerous times, uh, all of their subs, any of the subs they're using, they've been on site looking at what they have to do. Uh, so everything's lining up, uh, we've issued P.O.s and work has started on the cabinetry work, I think that's coming up.
Uh, it's here.
It's approved. Uh, so those folks have to be lined up to fall right in behind, uh, the tile people and the floor people and all of, you know, all that kind of stuff so that, so that it will get done before, uh, the start of school. I think that's the major projects, uh, a lot of sidewalk, sidewalk work is taking place in the last few weeks at Somertown, participating, some paving up there. Um, I think that's the major things that's going on, I hope.
The final, uh, where, where we're at with the E.S.G. group and E.L. Coffin's bathrooms?
Uh, we've got a representation from E.S.G. here tonight.
Okay.
I think it's on the agenda.
It is.
Very, one of the flash things on the agenda.
Okay, yep, I see that. Okay, so he, I guess that's the gentleman back there. I got you.
Patiently waiting.
I apologize, I, we, we'll look.
Yeah, that, that's, he, he'll be able to share some, answer some questions for you tonight. Hopefully, we can get something resolved there and move, move on with that project.
What about the, uh, bathroom situation at Ingraham Sound?
Finished.
Finished, done?
We're ready to move on to, uh, to another set of fresh rooms.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any questions for Mr. Tucker? Thank you, sir. All right, let's see where we're at now. That gets us down, uh, through all the report items, line item three, uh, executive committee items for consideration and, uh, action. Uh, Somertown High School, school, uh, circle renovation, um, we've been talking about that several times. This is for the cabinet, funding source is the bond. Uh, are there any questions on that? Hundred forty-one thousand. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, second. Do we have a second? I think Mr. Weathers gave a second. Please call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Weathers?
Yes.
Aidos?
Aidos, motion carries. Uh, next line item, Loretta High School concrete, concrete path with the new bleachers. This is what I'm assuming, what Mr. Tucker was just talking about, bleachers arriving and we're going to do a concrete path. So these have been discussed and, and talked about multiple times. Uh, forty-two thousand dollars to approve this pad. Um, any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
I have to approve.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Please call roll.
Weathers?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Aidos?
Motion carries. Budget items for consideration and action. Uh, South Lawrence School approval of rights to farmland. I would give this over to Director, uh, Atkins.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've been approached several times in the past and we've, uh, declined the, the interest, but, uh, with, with some projects that we had in mind, but that has now, uh, been changed. And some folks have reached out about farming the land south of South Lawrence there where the school was going to be built at one time. I have spoken with, uh, Mr. Cagle and I've spoken with our insurance provider, and both have said that it is okay to do that. We may have to have a little contract written up for the folks that would farm that land and some agreements in their typical language, but, uh, any issues that the board would have with that insurance has made it clear that we would be covered with some things that we'd just have to do as a board. So we're just asking you for permission to, uh, bid that out, because we would have to put it out as a bid and allow folks to bid on it and go through the whole process and then award that to someone with a, a year, three-year contract, with renewal every year or three years, whatever the board wanted to do.
Do they have to have a license of any type? Because I know if they build, it's a contractor license.
Yes, but it, this is just farming, farming.
Farming, row crop?
Yes, sir. That sort of thing.
What's going on with the property now? What's being done with it?
Uh, growing up.
Sets there, someone cuts it for us now just for hay. Well, it's kind of a trade-off, they will, it just sits there.
How much ground is it?
Is that one thirty-three?
I think it's around thirty-five, I believe.
I've heard it's around twenty-seven acres that's farmed.
The original purchase was thirty-five acres, but part of that may not be able to farm yet. So I'm not sure what.
What's the plan for it, uh, long-term?
Uh, initially, it was purchased for the development of a high school on that end. Uh, we entertained the idea of a solar farm a few years ago, but it was such a lease with the company of twenty years and we weren't sure what growth would be down there and the need, so we, we backed out of that and just returned it to what it is. But I think, uh, if it's farmland, it would be restored back and then it could be developed if needed.
Is there a, like a, a number of year contract you've got in mind?
No, no, sir. I would just simply ask Mr. Cagle and what the law is and then present back to the board. He recommended a three or five or whatever, and then also run that by our insurance provider to see what they think.
Any other questions?
Will it be like rent by the acre or is it going to be on production?
I think we're going to, uh, inquire as to how that business takes place and get the best deal that we can. I think one thing that we would like is to be able to have some sort of guaranteed income from it and not be based on production. We would just simply say this amount per acre.
Any other questions? All right, entertain a motion.
Make a motion and go ahead.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Please call roll.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Weathers?
Yes.
Aidos?
Motion carries. Item B, Somertown High School approval to harvest the timber. This would be on the, uh, purchased property, uh, where the football complex parking lot would be.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have spoken to numerous logging companies, uh, it's just not enough for them to invest in to that area to remove it. And Mr. Tucker and I have had ongoing conversations. It's just a, I guess, a personal opinion on this. I would love to be able to allow the folks in that community who use wood for the heating source in the winter to be able to access that and use it, rather than us just bulldozing it over and burning it. I've spoken to Mr. Cagle about that, I've spoken with the insurance. Insurance says, look, if we bring them on and they, uh, harvest it and we charge them, we'll have to have a contract and some guarantees, but if we just wanted to open it up to folks to come and say, look, I, I, I need some wood, cut it down, haul it off, that we would be insured as well. So legally and financially, we're covered on that, but I just, I want to exercise all options before we just bulldoze it over. If someone can use it for, for benefit, I'd like to pursue that if we could.
So you don't, we don't have anybody in mind right now in particular that's looking, but we're just opening it up to be able, for a community member who wants to cut a few logs, they can come get it.
That, that, that would work great if we could do it. At least we could look at that and say it's going to a good cause, rather than just burning it in July or next October, whenever it is.
Wouldn't you want to have that up and ready for a parking complex?
Oh, it's going to take several years. We're, we're not, uh, prepared for that just yet. We've still got ways to go and some other things, but, you know, we'd like to get that land cleared and at least get a better visual of it.
So ideas go in, let, let the community cut it, whatever, and two or three years, we, we take dozers in there and clean it up.
Yes. And that, that parking lot, that, that purchase of that land was for a parking lot, and where it's placed, it's north of the football field, and it would be south of the multipurpose building. But just south of the multipurpose building is land that we've set aside for that future gym. So you'd have parking across the road for that gym and for that football field. So that was strategic in how we wanted to utilize that land.
Any other questions? I have a motion to approve.
I have to approve.
I have a motion, looking for a second.
Second.
We have a second. Please call roll.
Weathers?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Jordan, oh, sorry, Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Aidos?
Motion passes. Uh, Somertown High School approval of plans for football complex parking lot.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, this will be an ongoing process. We want to get the, the approval now, uh, from the board. We submitted the, the plans to you. The process, once we get to the point where we're going to begin the parking lot work, there's a process on top of that with T-deck and some others. Uh, Mr. Tucker and I would like to go ahead and be moving in that direction. So if something were to happen and we had the means to go ahead and start that parking lot, we're not being held up for some, uh, government entity that's, makes us wait eight, ten, twelve months. We'd like to just be ready to pull the trigger if things were to fall into our lap.
And these are the plans that we have reviewed already, and this is what's before us right now. This is that property that we just approved to get wood cut off of, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second, please call roll.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Weathers?
Yes.
Adams.
Motion carries. D, Summertown High School, paving.
Chairman, Daniel, can I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
This just made me start thinking about, so what is, what is to happen with the existing bleachers and buildings and things on the football field that the team has been using?
That is the community's. It does not, it does not belong to us. Any other questions?
Yes, thank you.
Just back to D, paving vendors, Summertown High School, vendor Rogers Group, four-hundred-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars.
Mr. Chairman, this is a continuation of our efforts to repave, resurface parking lots. I think we are down to our last two of repaving. One of the two left, it would be Summertown Middle and High School and then our next one would be Lawrence County High School. So, we have either resurfaced or paved existing school parking lots in the last five years. So, we're down to the last two and it's the, Summertown Middle and High School's on the agenda tonight.
And Lawrence County will be the next in line.
That's the next one.
Okay. Look for them. Any questions? Anybody have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion. Second?
Second.
Have a second. Please call roll.
Mr. Weathers?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Adams.
Motion carries. Lawrence County High School, classroom block walls, vendors, Ever construction, ninety-eight-thousand. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Any, have a second?
No question.
Second.
Ms. Alexander's got a question. We do have a second by Mr. Weathers.
Are these replacing those pool together that divide those rooms off?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? We have a motion in a second. Please call roll.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Weathers?
Yes.
Adams.
Motion carries. Summertown High School, middle, elementary in Edredge, internet infrastructure, total of seventy-five-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Seventy-five cents was important. This is Central Technologies.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is a part of E-rate funding that school districts get. The formula is if, if the project is a certain amount of money, then the E-rate will cover eighty percent of that and the school district has to do twenty percent. So, this is a five-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar project where the school is investing, district is investing seventy-six thousand dollars. And so, it's a great deal for our schools and it's something that Mr. Hobbs anticipates receiving the next couple of years to do this work at all of our schools.
The funding destruction is...
What is this coming out of, the seventy-five thousand that we'll pay?
It'll, it'll come out of our general purpose.
General purpose. Okay, and it was budgeted?
Within the technology budget.
Okay. All right, so it was budgeted within the technology budget coming out of the general purpose budget. Any questions? From Mr. Hobbs?
And if we just need to clarify why it's those schools because of some of the work being done up there, it made it a lot easier to go ahead and do that.
Well, I have a question and I don't know, Mr. Atkins, and probably shouldn't be speaking to preliminary data yet, but one of the things that I saw scored, I believe Summertown Elementary was one of the lowest scoring in the technology department. And I know it's on here at Summertown Elementary. Does any of that going to go help benefit those low scores in that technology?
It will, but I think they had a deduction on their percentages based on where some servers were placed in some rooms, which they will fix, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Look for a second?
Second.
Have a second. Please call roll.
Weathers?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Adams.
Motion carries. All right, we're in the whole stretch. Hang in there. Food service items for consideration, approval of commodity processing bids. There's the, oh, there was.
Hold on.
There we go.
There you go.
This is our commodity processing bid where we're able to send bulk pounds of food to our vendors and it helps to reduce our cost because we're having the processing fee. So, before you have the summary where it shows the lowest vendor that meets the specifications and it provides a cost saving for these items of about fourteen-thousand dollars for us estimated for next year.
Any questions?
Uh-uh.
It's a lot of money for cheese sticks. A lot of cheese sticks.
Now, this is also in other districts too, so it's not just Lawrence County.
All right. Motion to approve. We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Please call roll.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Weathers?
Yes.
Adams.
Hey, before you go, Mr. Atkins.
I just want to recognize the hard work of the ladies in the cafeteria. And, I mean, they do amazing work and when you go out to the schools and you see what they do behind scenes and you talk to them and then you see them on the lunch lines and how they greet our kids and make them feel special, just another reason it's great to be in Lawrence County, that we have those ladies and Mrs. Simpson taking care of those, those kids each and every day. So, thank you. I wanted you to publicly hear.
You're an amazing staff. We're very fortunate.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of six.
Mr. Chairman, this is just language cleanup that we caught when Mrs. Elgin and I were reviewing it. Last year maybe, the board approved birthdays that were not taken by the employees could roll to sick days. We had omitted a section in there or didn't change it and called it. So, if an employee does not use their birthday, it rolls to a sick day. We addressed that, I think, with staff, but we wanted to clear this up with certified employees, that theirs is the same. If they do not use it, it rolls to a sick day. So, the idea of you lose it, if you don't use it, we've cleaned that up and it will now benefit them. If they use it, fine. If they don't, it rolls to a sick day.
So, this was a policy previously approved. We just overlooked correction language.
It was changed in one area of the policy, but not the, there were two areas of the policy.
I make a motion to approve. We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Policy carries. Number seven, personnel items for consideration, personnel items for consideration, teacher bonus resolution.
Mr. Chairman and the board, a part of the Education Freedom Act, I can't remember if it's section four, section five, addresses teacher bonuses. And it is teacher bonuses and we will be getting information on who qualifies for that. But, in order for the bonuses to be sent to the school system, the Board of Education has to pass a resolution that simply says, "We are going to participate in this bonus program, this bonus program." And that's all you're agreeing that you support is the bonus for the teachers. There's been some confusion that it's also indicating you support something else and that's not the case. You're just approving the section tonight that says the Lawrence County school system will gladly take the money and hand it off to our teachers.
Did you get anywhere on how this is paid out? I know you had made mention, I don't know if it was in a public meeting or a conversation, but you'd made mention about trying to find ways to award this to our teachers so it won't be hit so heavy with taxes?
Well, the state has addressed that. So, the law, if I understood it correctly, says a teacher must receive two-thousand dollars. And the state will cover all of the fees. This is not something that will come out of school funds. This is handled at the state level. The benefits...
So, each employee should, when we say they're going to get two-thousand dollars, they're going to get two-thousand dollars in their checking account.
That was my understanding, but I see Mrs. Elgin just raised her hand, so it could be corrected.
So, there are two components of paying payroll taxes. For you business owners out there, you know this, there's an employer portion of FICA, Social Security, Medicare taxes, and then there is the employee portion as well. The state is going to give us two-thousand dollars plus the employer portions of those taxes that we are required to pay. So, the district is not out any funds. Now, your personal employee federal withholdings will still come out of that two-thousand dollars. So, no, I do not believe...
Yeah, because bonuses are taxed at a higher tax rate.
I do not believe that every employee will come home with two-thousand dollars.
No, because bonuses are taxed at a higher tax rate.
That's correct.
Because taxpayers are not going to be out of any money, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Right? Is that, is that correct?
That's what we have understood, is that as, as a school district, we will only be a pass-through. There will be no additional expense.
Not local taxes. It's still taxpayer dollars. But, not local taxes.
Yes.
Yes.
The other question, that continuation of that was other employees. Do we need to, is it fair to lay it on the table right now?
Say, "I'm sorry." Say that again.
Other employees, lunchroom workers. So, is that a fair discussion?
I think it is, absolutely.
But, it's not up to us, right? That was a state law. How is...
No, I mean, what they're saying is, do we consider as a board? That would be up to us. The law, I mean, the state's only going to give it to the educators, certified teachers. If we wanted, I believe what I understand, do we want to as a board consider giving that kind of bonus to all of our employees? I would like to, I mean, I think it's worth entertaining. I would like to throw that to Mr. Atkins and say, "Report to us what that looks like financially to us and can we, can we cover that?" Or what does that do, does to our budget?
Historically, we've tried to do that in the past. Historically, we've tried to do something for all. But, what we've got to also keep in mind is, you know, and I guess that's my question too, is that two-thousand dollars for every teacher on just that formula or is it every teacher that we employ, every certified person we employ?
The state is going to send us the list of those that they deem eligible for that.
So, it might, it might not be all.
There's, I think it's...
Never has been all.
The people who are excluded are administrators and central office personnel. I think the nurses, social workers, school-based therapists, I think those folks have been brought into that. But, it was very clear administrative personnel is not. And so, I'm happy to take a look at it, run some numbers and then report back to the board on, on what the cost would be if you do this. Now, the cost on two-thousand-dollar bonus that we're paying out will be taxed pretty heavily.
Yes.
It'd, if you want them to get two-thousand dollars, you're going to approve a good bit of money above that for the deductions to get it there. So, it could be costly. But, we can run those numbers and share.
Would that, would that be sufficient, Mr. Atkins?
Yeah, I just wanted to lay it on the table that it's, there's going to be a cost of that, you know, and, you know, I don't want to get into the two grand and how it's added onto that bill, which I think was very inappropriate for state leaders to do. But, our folks, they need the money. I think, I think, I think our teachers need to be supported and especially our lunchroom workers and janitors and so forth. They, they need to be supported, so...
Yeah, because the state's going to give to the, if Mr. Atkins, if you would just take that and report back to us what you would recommend that could be feasible financially from, from the system, from our budget and to do something for all of our employees, that'd be great. And then we can talk about that next month. But, what's on the table right now is what the state is giving and what we're voting on is just allowing our teachers to receive what the state is giving. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have an approval. We have our motion to approve. We got a second?
Second.
We have a second. We need to, each individual sign this document and he has it right here. So, it is on the table. Please call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Weathers?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Adams.
Motion carries. We'll pass the paper around if y'all would sign that and make sure it gets back to Ms. Jessica, I guess, or you, whoever. All right, so that takes us all the way down through number eight. Approval of the sixth grade transition to Summertown Middle School. We've talked that over multiple times. Any questions on that? Motion, look for a motion.
I was just wondering about the things that they brought up. The, I mean, how we're going to address those. Would they come after this or they need to be...
The sharing of the...
Right. I mean, if they, they don't have a school, they need to have a school. I don't know.
Well, I will say this, when, when we introduced this last year, I think was its first year in existence, it's going to be a process of getting those things in place. Dr. Hallmark and I met yesterday after a principal's meeting to discuss some personnel needs that she had. So, we want to address those personnel needs and then begin the process of looking. But, we would want to look at across the district, what is a bookkeeper at a school of eight-hundred doing versus a bookkeeper of two-hundred-and-eighty? So, we'd want to try to be as fair as we could in, in moving in that direction, but that's a process.
My, my main thing is a library. I mean, that's my candidate.
I say, but I don't understand, I mean, I don't have the same viewpoint of how much, why we would need another librarian. But, anyway, I'll, I'll volley that over to Mr. Atkins and take y'all's recommendation on what is needed or what's not.
I would say it would need to be a process and address those immediate needs and then work through that.
All right, so, any other comments, discussion on this approval of the sixth grade transition? I'll make the motion to approve. Look for a second?
Second.
Mr. Adams has a second. Please call roll.
Weathers?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Adams.
Motion carries. Now, to the ESG update.
And, Mr. Chairman, with us tonight from ESG is Mr. Bobby Cox. Mr. Cox is, I believe, new to ESG, but he is a retired superintendent, has been a principal. So, he is used to staying at board meetings late. So, don't, don't be proud that you kept him here this long. He's used to it.
Recovering, secretary.
Recovering.
Thank you.
Recovering.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I know, talking to Mr. Tucker and Mr. Atkins, we value the relationship we have with Florence County Schools. Done several projects with Florence County, very successful projects. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the Hill Kaufman project and do the best I can to answer those.
Okay, I appreciate you being here. Yeah, if I'd have realized, I probably would have tried to move early on, I would have tried to move you up, I didn't anyway, so. But yeah, it's been an extra, extra long meeting for all of us, but appreciate you hanging in. Board members, any questions to Mr. Cox?
I think the discussion was the cost of the, of the.
Plans.
Plans. And there was another question about changes possibly and, and, you know, the cost of coming back and making changes, is that how it was worded?
Do we have that documentation of what, from last month, of what the, what was the payout to buy the plans?
I can, I can.
And what all was, what all was in, in, the plans entailed?
Just, just to give, I guess, a little history of where we started, you know, that'd be appropriate, I guess, to do that. You know, I kind of started with a conversation of the need of the restrooms at the Hill Kaufman. We came down, we did an evaluation with our engineers. From that evaluation, they determined that we needed to call in more, there's some structural issues with the ceiling. It's starting to deteriorate because of some cast iron plumbing, which the bathrooms are stacked, so it affects the top one and the bottom. So in the conversation, we wanted just to look at all four restrooms. There's two on one side, top and bottom, two on the other side, top and bottom, to, to look at updating those as well. So heavy structural on one side, more cosmetic on the other side. So what we did from that was we engaged our architect, of course, they had to bring in a structural engineer, who, we also had to bring in a plumbing electrical engineer. We have our physical engineer and then architect, because we'd have to do ADN compliance with that. So, so that, that is kind of where we were at at the very beginning. So that project was somewhere between $700 million to do all four restrooms with all the structural. So when we talked to Mr. Tucker, he said we need to kind of scale that back a little bit. So we looked at, at scope and tried to scale that back, got within around on that $600,000 mark, maybe a little more from that. And then, again, felt like, hey, what can we do to allow some of your maintenance folks to do some of the cosmetic things and we handle more of the structural things? Just in the one restrooms that have structural issues, not touching the other restrooms. So that's, that's kind of what we did. We got to, the last time we met, it was about $399,000 to do the top and bottom, the structural that needed to be done, needed to be done in the architecture. So that, that's kind of where we were, and that was a couple of months ago. Of course, a lot of things have happened, you know, since then with tariffs, et cetera, so I don't know if that price will hold, you know, currently with our contractors. At the very beginning, we did have a contractor that was, you know, working with us when we started reducing scope. They backed away from the project because of the involvement of the time that it was gonna be spent, so we had to kind of regroup from that. So, you know, getting back to the question, I wanted to lay that, kind of that foundation to get back to the question. So the internal cost that, that we've spent currently is about $16,000, a little over $16,000 from ESG engineering, you know, labor, things of that type to kind of get where we're at. The structural design, the architecture, plumbing, electric, MEP is about $21,000, a little over $21,000 that we incurred so far. So currently about $37,000, a little over $37,000 to get to the point where we're at now. The question was asked about, okay, what would that take to get to the plans? And get the plans to you. Our architect, you know, gave us a letter, of course, they are a little apprehensive about turning plans over. The plans would not be fire marshal approved, they would not be stamped by the engineer. They would be just, you know, plans that, that we would turn over. That was $41,000 to get the plans. So all in all, it was a little over $82,000 was what we had spent and to get the plans. So that's kind of where we're at, you know.
$82,000 for, to get the plans, is that what?
And, and, you know, the work that we have done.
Okay.
To get to that point. And that was, and the plans and the drawings that, you know, we would get are about 200-page drawing packet. That would include all the architectural drawings, the mechanical, electrical plumbing drawings, structural drawings, materials, spec sheets, ESG strategy and design, investigative research, utility savings, but they would not be, again, fire marshal approved, they would not be, they would be non-stamped drawings. So that, that's kind of where we stand as of today, and that, that $41,000 is passed through. That's, you know, that is, that's what they charge us, that's what we pass on to you.
And then the $399, the $82 is part of it, would be part.
Yeah, if the project went forward.
That was factored into that.
Yes, I mean, if the project went forward, then that would be, you know, in addition to that.
This architecture and design and drawing and all this time has been contracted, y'all contracted?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So then what is the $37,000 and the $21,000 and the $16,000?
The 37, the, the $16,000 is our internal labor, our engineers, our time spent from ESG. The $21,000 is, we had to pay the architect to come down, the structural engineer to come down, the mechanical, electrical plumbing engineer to come down, provide all of that information to the architect to begin drawing the plans. So that's the $21,000. So the 21 plus the 16 gets to the $37,000.
So that, yeah, the $37,000 total?
Yes, yes, sir.
Alright, I'm sorry about that.
No, no, that's fine.
Okay.
So $390, I'm sorry, Chairman?
No, yes, go.
So $399 out the door gets Kaufman's bathrooms ready, done completely.
At the time, the last time that we met, which was a couple of months ago. Now, if, if the contractors will hold that, hold that price, then that's the last price that we gave, Mr. Tucker.
What I heard also, it's not turned key-ready, and we're gonna use our maintenance personnel, so.
It would not, that, that $399 would be, we would have everything, you know, all of the plating replaced, we have to tear down the CMU wall, we have to structurally support the ceiling repair, all of that, all of that structural work. The, the part that your maintenance folks would come in and do would be lot, you know, petitions, you know, resetting poles, things of that type. Would be, you know, just the, and the other.
So you'd have it plumbed in and sited?
We would have it plumbed in and ready to go, they'd set, you know, set the poles, set the urinals.
And $400,000 doesn't buy toilets being set and urinals being set?
That's the, I mean, that's the, the, you know, kind of the agreement that we had when we went through the process, so.
I mean, Mr. Cox, I, you know, I can't speak for the board, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for myself, a full transparent kind of guy. I believe this is outrageous. I believe ESG has stepped into an arena that they have not as skilled in as experienced in, and I believe they're overcharging. I have contacts, contacts in the same field of these engineering teams, and I've reviewed what you have given us, price tag, we're being overcharged on these plans. My recommendation to this board is we get out from underneath this deal with y'all is with a minimum payment that we can, and we separate ways with ESG.
I understand that, I appreciate your opinion.
Totally.
You know, like, all I can say is that we do this work a lot, obviously across the state. We're doing a, over an $8 million project right now in another county with same architects. So we, we are general contractor, licensed general contractor, so we do this work across the board. But I do appreciate your opinion and understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments from the board? What is, yeah, what is our get out from under, is it just $41,000?
The, it depends on if you want plans or how you want to proceed. I'll be glad to work with, with Mr. Atkins or the board, or Mr. Tucker, or however we need to, to do that, cover our costs. And if you want plans, that's one cost, if you don't want plans, then, you know, that's another.
$37,000, just no plan, we leave that in plan?
Based on what he said, it was the $37,000.
Yeah, $37,000, no plans, $82,000 to walk away with the plans, is that, is that right?
Did the $399 include the plans, or was the plan separate?
No.
Yeah, our $400,000 to get them to do.
If, again, if.
If that's still, which, sure, sure it doesn't, time, too much time's passed and materials have gone up.
It's been a while since we've talked to contractors.
Any other questions, discussions?
Ken, I got a suggestion.
Sir?
I got a suggestion that, that we table this and then have some kind of special meeting, you know, soon and determine this, okay? I've got questions, if we don't go with this, what are we gonna do?
Right.
Alright, we're gonna pay him $41,000, then we're gonna have to buy another set of plans from somebody.
That's.
So, as my daddy used to say, we're cutting their nose off in spite of her face.
Yeah, I mean, it's $82,000, and we can walk away with the plans and go get them bid out.
Right.
In another company.
Yeah.
Or if you did the $37,000, walk away, then you're, we're $37,000, we ain't got nothing.
Right.
May I ask a question of Mr.?
Sir.
Mr. Cox, if we were, if the board were to go with you and this price stayed at $399, and hypothetically, we signed off all night tomorrow, the work could begin when?
That'd be a good question, I can find that out and get back to you.
I asked that because we heard from Mr. Long earlier and the strain that that school has been under, though it hasn't limited them necessarily, but it has made some, added some difficulty to what they're doing. So, you know, in our plan and our hope was that we could start that probably sometime in May and have that done before the kids come back in August. But, you know, we're definitely not gonna be able to do that now. I agree with Mr. Adams, I think maybe tabling it and discussing it, but I do think we need to have a plan so that we can start this. This is work that needs to take place when the kids aren't in the building.
Right.
And not during the school day in August, September, October, or whenever else. So I think time is something, and.
And we would certainly work to that end, I mean, you know, you know, you've got to go back to school in August, and, you know, you need that well, well before that. So it all depends on what you want to do, you know, how we go about doing it, what are contractors, you know, that we talk with, can do, are willing to do. But we would certainly do our best.
Mr. Jacobs?
We started out at 700 and something thousand. Came down to 400, but that's without urinals or anything else. What has been taken out of that 700 to bring it down?
It's been that kind of work.
And us doing a lot of the work.
Right.
What, what's been taken out? What's gonna be left for us?
You got an answer to that, Mr. Cox?
I think I do, yes, sir. Of course, the all-inclusive for us included, you know, us doing everything. So that's all the plumbing, all the electrical, all the partitions, all the fixtures, everything. The $399, $841 that we discussed last is the district would provide, would provide demo of the existing petitions, plumbing fixtures. District would provide restroom with four walls and petitions, so that would be the demo. We would demo the pipe chase, CMU wall on the first and second floor, all of the cast iron plumbing from the foundation within the restroom walls, install PVC wastewater piping to existing foundation, encasing water piping, stub out all the toilets, install all the steel reinforcement beams that needs to be installed, rebuild the CMU pipe chase on the first and second floor, install urinals on the, on the second floor, on the new pipe chase wall, all other fixtures, petitions, finishes, et cetera, would be installed by the owner. So we do all the heavy lifting, you know, and some of the lot, but the demo's done by the district.
What about flooring?
I think with flooring, there's no discussion.
Yeah, it was originally in that larger number, they included some floor.
Yeah.
We'd be responsible for.
We would have to do the flooring and drops, floor and drop ceiling and lights, that, that's what was cut out, floor and drop ceiling and lights.
So the $399, or 300, 400,000, they're gonna do their work, and then we're still gonna turn around and invest more money on the floor and drop ceilings and things. I mean, somebody's gotta do that, our guys or somebody, and we gotta buy that material. So we've saved it from their end, but we're still on the hook to buy it from somebody.
It'd be like us going in and doing what we've done at Ingram Cell, renovating the restroom. Because we, we do the petitions, we do the new toilet, like, flooring, we do that.
We're capable of doing that?
Oh, we do, we do, that's just what we finished at Ingram Cell.
You know how speedy our labor team goes, yes, ma'am?
What type of structural damage do we have? What are they doing? Are they taking out floors, or what are they doing? What are they bidding to do?
What are they bidding to do?
Yeah, the structural part.
Well, what's happening is due to the wastewater piping and the age of it, it's starting to deteriorate, to deteriorate the rebar that's in the ceiling. So some of the concrete is failing. So what the structural engineer has recommended is we have to support that ceiling, which is not only the ceiling on the lower floor, but also the floor on the top. Okay, because, you know, it's starting to flake off. So, you know, supporting that so it's structurally sound, that means we have to tear out, there's a pipe chase that runs behind where all the plumbing is. So we have to tear out all of that concrete wall, take out all of the cast iron, old cast iron piping, so that solves that issue, rebuild it all back and support the ceiling and floor.
Is that only one side, both sides, or what?
That's just one side, that's just one side.
One bathroom?
The other side is not affected. It's got drops.
Yeah, I've been there.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I've just wondered how many, was it gonna be two bathrooms you tore out, four you tore out, or what?
Two, two bathrooms, top and bottom.
And the cast iron, is it leaking, or what?
Yeah, that's what's happening, just the age of it, it's, it's seeping into the floor, rusting the rebar, it's causing the concrete to flake out.
We reached out, just to give you a little background, when we reached, we reached out to ESG because we have a professional contract with them and we knew that they had engineers that could come. When this originally started, we were fearful to even be in the building, because we were afraid the floor was gonna fall in on somebody's head. And, I mean, we were structurally, we, we don't have people on staff that does this work, we had to go with somebody else. And so we could quickly go with them because we already had an agreement with them to give us an assessment, tell us whether or not we need to get out of that building or just get out of that bathroom. And so they came and did all the work, you know, the bathrooms have been shut down since.
But this gives us a little more insight as to what they're doing, whether they're taking out four bathrooms, redoing everything, gives you a little more idea of what it should cost.
Ms. Alexander?
Yeah, my question here, if, if we do something like this and then we depend on our guys to take care of the ends, how much are they, time are they gonna have to get it done? Are they not gonna be involved in this, getting things turned over at Somertown as well?
And I think that's one of the concerns that, that Mr. Tucker and I have. Our guys are capable of doing some good work, they're not capable of doing the level that is, but they can do these other things. The problem is, is when an air conditioning unit goes out at one of the schools, they have to pull off and go deal with that.
Jack?
When it leaves, so the time of getting that done drags out because they're stretched. Whereas somebody coming in and doing this work does solve that problem. It's done and it's, we move on. There's a price for that, the convenience of it, there's a price for that. But our guys are capable of doing the work, it's the time, the time is our concern.
Is there liability involved in that?
I'm sorry?
Is there liability involved in that?
Not with what they would be doing, the toilets, the urinals, they do that work now.
But I mean, they tried to do any of this other?
Oh, I would, I would, I think so.
That's why this, this has to go to an architect and be perfected, there's no, we, this, it has to.
So while, if, if we went the, bought the plans at the $82,000, what's keeping them from being fire marshal approved and stamped by the engineer?
Well, the, you know, the architect, if we turn, if the architect turns the plans over to you, then he's backing away from any responsibility or liability. So another architect that has to come in, you know, take the plans, stamp the plans, I guess, do the review of the plans, I don't know the process that, because we, I've never been involved in, in doing that, so I don't really know, I can find out, you know, we're gonna have to do that.
Yeah, I mean, he's done the work, I mean, I don't, if he's done the work and he's done his due diligence and y'all are ready to build off of that work, then why can't he put his stamp on it and say, these are certified plans that we are selling? And now we can go through legal, we've got lawyers, y'all've got lawyers, and we can say, you're not, you know, we're buying these plans, you're, you're held harmless what we do with these plans.
I mean, I'm, I'm sure we can have those conversations, and I just don't have an answer for you.
Sir.
Does that architect work for ESG?
He's under contract with ESG.
There's your answer.
So, Mr. Cox, let's say that we did that, what Chairman Daniel mentioned, and halfway through the job, the folks doing this work, because it's, it's gonna be folks that understand this type of work, tearing down these beams and all this, and they find an issue, and it requires a change in the plans. Who would we go to to say, we need this? Because the people doing the contract work, the going in there and taking out the walls and the ceilings, they run into an issue, they need somebody to rewrite that plan or give them approval or give them the workaround or whatever.
We'd have to go with them, couldn't we?
Yeah, that wouldn't be ESG, it would be somebody else that we would, another engineer.
If we're performing the work, just like the, the projects we've performed with you previous, ESG has a no change order policy. We try to do our due diligence on the front end. If, when we give you a farm fixed price, that's the price. So if there's something that comes up, unless it is a fire marshal approved, a fire marshal comes in and says, no, you've got to change something, that will be the only time we can come back to the district, then the price that we give you is the price that we would deliver the project. And then we're gonna stand behind that project, you know, for at least 12 months after that. You know, there's warranties that would go along with that on the fixtures and things of that type. But we're gonna stand behind that, you know, 12 months after that. And I think we've had history with the district of doing more than that with projects.
The energy project was great, I mean, I still, I review the reports and I have no, no complaints. You know, my heartburn is a half a million dollars for four bathrooms is a hard pill to swallow.
Yes, sir, I understand.
And I've got, I've got constituents to answer to, and when this community hears that we've done four, you know, half a million dollars of work and got four bathrooms to show for, that's a hard thing to answer.
I spent 20 years.
Yeah, you know where I'm talking about.
Doing just what he's doing, eight in that seat, four as county commissioner. I understand what you're saying, you know. But, you know, also this project, and I, I want to work with you to get a good project, okay? You know, again, we value, I, I feel like Mr. Atkins and I are friends, I've worked with the district in other capacities. Same way with Mr. Tucker, same way with Mr. Jones, I want to deliver a project that works for you. I mean, I'm a school guy, I've spent my whole life doing that. But this project is a little bit more intensive than just your normal restroom renovation. I mean, we're supporting a ceiling that concrete, you know, is flaking off, so it's a little bit more.
Yeah, and I appreciate, and you know, I'm not, I'm not attacking you.
I'm not. I understand, I mean, like I said, I want, I want to work with you all, any way you want to work with us.
Mr. Long, the principal, Mr. Long asked, go ahead.
The price tag seems outrageous, I mean, it's more than just four bathrooms, if you, if you look at where, because nineteen fifty-five, nineteen fifty-seven, somewhere around there that we're dealing with, there are two electrical panels in the utility closets that can't stay there. So I mean, when you start moving the elec, those electrical panels, you're, you're, I don't want to overstate, but it, you're affecting a lot of the wiring on those two floors where those panels have to be moved. So it's more than just two bathrooms, and I don't, I don't even want to begin to try to understand the, the structural part of it, the way that building was built back in nineteen fifty-seven, but it, it's more than just four bathrooms. It, I, it's, there's a lot, there's a lot more extensive work going on than just those bathrooms. It's not just fifty-two.
Yeah, thank you, well, and you know, another thing from my chair is, you know, I'm just envision, if we go forward with this and then, you know, what other quote do we have? What, what other comparison do we have? You know, so this is, this half a million dollars for what I just described in scope, maybe a little bit more than four bathrooms, but, you know, I might say, or I would say, well, who else did you look at?
I understand, I understand totally. I mean, again, we're happy to work with you anyway, I understand if, if you feel like we need to separate, I understand that too.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'd like to suggest that we go with Bill's idea of tabling, at the same time, I'd like to suggest that we set a timeframe on it, even though our bid's two months old, we, to be honest with you, you can't give me any kind of definite number of where it would actually be now, correct? Didn't you say that earlier? So maybe we set a table for a pretty quick turnaround?
Yes, sir.
Allow you to actually see where the number is now, two months later, and go from there. Because while I agree that it's expensive, it's got to be fixed. I mean, and, and it's been an issue for, what, a year?
We've been out of the year, it's going to be.
So, again.
And we started this conversation in the summer.
Right, so, you know, I, I get it, and, and the, and the, the price tag is extremely high, but at the same time, I don't think we need to drag our feet any longer, and I think before we make a decision to part ways, we need to know what the actual number is, not a two-month-old number that we're suggesting. And at the same time, I think Mr. Tucker ought to look at what we're going to have to, the cost that we're going to have to.
On top of it.
On top of it, other than what their part is. So, I mean, yeah, it's a, it's a high number and we're shocked now, but what if we make a decision and he comes back and says, well, it went from three ninety-nine to, now it's back up to six hundred? So I think we need to know that before we actually make a decision.
Yeah. Ms. Jacobs had her hand up, go ahead.
Mr. Long brought up a point, did they include anything they find there on the electrical that this will create another problem?
I'm assuming that all these, I mean, I would hope.
Include those two?
I didn't, I don't think, I can check with our engineer, but I don't think we had any, any real issues with the electrical. I mean, there would be some electrical rewiring that would have to be done, things of that type.
But moving boxes?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'll ask and see.
It gets expensive.
But in the conversations that I've had with our engineer, I don't think, he's not voice that, so I'll have to check on that.
Yes, sir.
Tim over here have a question for me.
Mr. Shannon, Dr. Shannon, did you, would you?
I did have a question.
Okay.
I do, I do, I, just two things. One thing I would like to say is I think your no change order policy is wonderful, I will give you that positive, that's really good. Can ESG, if we enter into contract with you guys, like, say in May, end of April, end of April, May, can you guarantee the bathrooms to be up and running for the school system to start back in August?
I, I would hate to guarantee, because I don't, I don't know when we could get started. You know, I've talked into our engineers and things, they said, you know, obviously the quicker we get started, the quicker we can, you know, get it through, you know, I just don't want to, I don't want to guarantee right now. If, if we have a conversation a week from now, and I do a little bit more due diligence, and we bring, you know, the team in, and they say, yeah, we can, we can get it going if we hit this, this date, but right now, I don't want to make that guarantee. But I, I will say this, we'll do everything we can to get it there.
Ms. Jacobs has another question.
Yes, ma'am.
One other thing that might be considered here is with the tariffs coming on possibly, there may not be an abundance of the material you're going to need.
Yeah, and, and that's true, and that's.
That happened with Katrina, we were in the process of doing all of the.
Yes, ma'am.
Water systems here, the heat.
Yes, ma'am.
Geothermal.
Yes, ma'am.
And Katrina hit, and everything went sky high, and you couldn't get what you needed.
Well, and like I said, ESG is a, woodwork across the country, so obviously we have to pay attention, you know, to what's happening, you know, there to see. So, you know, right now, we've not seen, you know, anything right now that's really causing alarm, but that doesn't mean it won't happen next week.
Mr. Cox, you, ESG would bid this out to local contractors?
Yes, sir.
So it would be Lawrence County folks more than likely that would be doing this work, it'd be our folks from, from around here. Am I right in that, that?
Yeah, yeah, we, we have a procurement department that takes care of all that, our work is turnkey because we use professional services. I mean, we've used local contractors before, we engage local contractors here as well.
Okay, so we have recommendations from Mr. Adams and Mr. Rochelle, that we table this until a later date. I guess we would pick this conversation back up next month's board meeting, but maybe by a later date as far as later this, or next week timeframe, Mr. Atkins can get with Mr. Cox, and we can get a review of the timeline and maybe a refreshed quote of what it, what it is. And is that, is that fair, is that what's stated, sir?
Do you want us to call a special session, get some information, call?
Yeah, to the board, do we want to call a special session and just meet one, one afternoon on, just on this topic and, and get the ball rolling one way or the other? Yes, ma'am.
Can I add a topic to that special session, based on what our principals presented to, tonight? We, we, listening to, to Dr. Hallmark talk about the gym at Summertown, it's going to be years before they get a new gym, but immediately, immediately, something has got to be done with a chair lift or something. I mean, yes, it would mean tearing out some beautiful woodwork or something, but the thought of, of not having some kind of lift or some, something in that gym, I, I just don't know how we can let that move forward.
Yeah, we can put that on, we can put that on the special sessions.
That's another architecture. I mean, that's the process we'll have to, it will have to go through.
Got to watch the man at home.
I mean, I, yes.
It has to happen.
We, we can, I mean, what I like to say has to happen is the county commission approves some funding, let's get a gym built.
Well, I agree, but that's not going to happen. I mean, they're going, they may approve the money, but it's going to take forever to build it, I guess that's what I'm saying. That's my concern.
Yeah, so, but yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll look at that. So, Mr. Cox, you know, how far, how, how much is it to ask of you to come, come back to another meeting?
I'll be here whenever you want me to be here.
Uh, two weeks timeframe?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Somebody got a calendar?
Does that have a?
Tucker, we'll do it.
Does that put us on, I don't want to put us on, April tenth is two weeks? What you doing math real fast like that?
I'm just hungry and smart.
All right, is everybody good with an April tenth special session? Five o'clock? And we'll revisit this and y'all gather some information on any possible things we can do at Summertown Gym. So, Mr. Cox, thank you for being here, thank you for answering those questions, and we'll, we'll reconvene April the tenth on special session. That gives us enough time to legally publicize it and all that, right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes, ma'am.
In the meantime, would you check and see if it is customary, when we buy these, and they've already been, we paying them to, all of them to the architect and all of them, put their stamp on them? Is it not customary?
Can we have that, can we have that conversation?
Sure.
About finding out what your guy, your, your engineer, you know, is stacking? If we were to buy out the eighty-two thousand, what would it take, I mean, the, I guess the fire marshal approval and the stamp?
Sure, I'll get that, I'll get all that information in the documentation from our architect, and we'll, we'll bring that with us on.
Awesome, thank you very much, Mr. Cox. Any other conversations, comments? I know we're all worn out.
Don't get porter up.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to the jury.
Motion to the jury.
Amen.